Our select board for Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some of you may know that one of our colleagues, Jim Hoffman, his mom passed away a few days ago, and I would just ask us all for a moment of silence in memory of her. Thank you. Ms. Bogart, if you would read our community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who may provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Bogart. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Sir?
Evening. Dan Frini, Bozstick Road. I'm here specifically to talk about the property on 31R Main Street. We all know what this property was intended to be used for, the battery farm. It's the hottest issue in town. I'm asking the board to move this forward tonight. We shouldn't have to worry about where the money's going to be coming from or what it's going to be used for. I'm asking the board to move it forward. If we can go ahead with this, this could kill the battery farm for once and all. And if the board approves it, then it'd be up to the townspeople whether we spend the money or not. But the board should go forward and move this petition forward to look at taking this property if it comes up for sale. That's all I have to say.
Okay, clarification, sir. You're not asking us to move it forward in the agenda tonight. You're just asking us to move it forward as to, you would like time to explore purchasing the property?
Yes, I would. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Belvin?
Robert Belvin, 26 Gate Street. I'm here to talk about the transfer of funds from the Cranberry Village water account to Cranberry Village Residents Association. At town meeting, we voted, not me, but town voted to go ahead and convey that land. Under Section 2, the deed, it reverts back to the Town of Carver if they fail to use it as a water source, all right? But it also gives the opportunity for them to walk away from it and just come up here to town hall and say, we can't afford it anymore. We're giving it back to the town now. And then the town's in the same position as the North Carver Water District, having to fund that water system. What I'm asking you guys to do today is to make sure that article, they're allowed to get that money only if they provide an invoice or receipt saying that they use that money for the intended purpose of the care and maintenance of that water system. We need to protect that asset, okay? And the only way that we can protect it is to keep that money and make sure that they maintain it adequately enough. If they don't, and over the next three, four, five, 10 years, they don't do it, it's going to call back on us, the taxpayers, to take care of that well. We did it once already for $400,000. Plus, our own DEP, DPW said that they were putting their own money into maintaining that. That wasn't coming out of that fund, okay? And my final thing is, the president of that association at town meeting said that the town used that money to buy a truck and a plow. And that was incorrect. And the town never stood up and said, that's wrong. That's incorrect information. So I want to make sure it's clear right now. The town never used any of that money for a plow. Never, never for a truck. That was incorrect. So if you can't trust them at town meeting to tell the truth, we need to protect the money, protect the asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Anyone else? Ms. Dormer?
Mary Dormer, 162 Plumb Street. I am also going to speak on the property 31R Main Street. I know I sent you guys an email yesterday saying I was asking about the public hearing that is required to be held before any option is discussed by the, by the select board. And so I'm going to ask you to schedule a public hearing so that the residents of Carver can weigh in on what we would like the select board to do with the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fantasy, a point of clarification here. A public hearing is held if the board wants to pursue a purchase of the property, correct?
The board votes for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mary Bowes from Cranberry Village. And our president, Brenda, is on the way. Is there any way, when she gets here, she has reserved a right to speak as well?
I think she's coming right behind you right now.
Okay.
Yeah. No. And Ms. McCall, we're going to include you in the conversation when the, when the agenda item comes up, okay? So you don't have to worry about that. You'll be included.
Mark, I read the statute, and I don't believe that that is accurate.
All right.
What it says is that the option may be exercised only after a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Moving right along, the next item is the approval of the 2022, sorry, the April 22, 2023 election warrant. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything on that? So I see it here. Is there a motion from the board?
Motion to approve the April 2022, sorry, April 22, 2023 election warrant.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing, none. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next is the, we have discussion and possible vote on several annual town meeting warrant articles. And since we have Ms. McCall here, any issue if we take the Cranberry Village transfer funds out of order and take care of this, this item? Okay. Ms. McCall, sure, come right up and... Mr. Fantasy, why don't you start us off with this?
Okay, so, this is, you recall last town meeting, the vote was to transfer the wells back to the Cranberry Village Association. Part of that, which wasn't in the article, is the funds that came out of the, the users of the water system at Cranberry Village. So that money has been collected by the town, has been held by the town. So this article will turn that money over to the association to use for their maintenance and their use for the, their wells, once the wells are completely turned over to them. So it'll, it'll end the relationship with the town and the wells and the association.
In a nutshell.
Ms. McCall, do everything, anything to add to that?
So I just want to make sure that, I guess I was under the impression that last year's town meeting, all of this would have been handled at the same time, that the verbiage in the warrant would have all been the same so that we weren't another whole year into this. So this time, I just want to make sure, I haven't seen the warrant, so I don't know what the verbiage is. I just want to make sure that all of the assets from the wells, from, that had been used from the enterprise fund, get turned over. Now, I know there's been some discussion about, you know, funds and where money came from and everywhere. This is basically, just like any other utility bill, where there's an overpayment, it goes into an account. That's how it was structured way back when, so that the town had money to, to provide for the wells from Cranberry Village. My understanding is somewhere along the line, there was a truck purchased with the enterprise fund money. I've seen it on the, the paperwork that I got when we first started talking about this back in 2019, and I believe it goes back to somewhere around '15 when everything was automated. Before that, they didn't bother to go and pull the paperwork, but it was like a couple of payments for a truck. I had spoken to Dave again a couple of years ago, and he confirmed that there was a truck still in the fleet. I don't know if today it still is in the fleet, because I don't know, you know, we're having a hard time getting a lot of the information that we need to be able to move forward with the wells. So we need maintenance records. We need things like that so that we can put together our best budget for the water. I've reached out a couple of times. It's hard to get, you know, people to want to send things. I've reached out to Small Water. I don't know when the contract that the town has with them expires. These are all things we need to know so that we can build our budget. If, if the town's going to cancel the contract, if we have to cancel it, I have to put it out to bid to other companies to come. So we're in a little bit of a time crunch. So April 11th is town meeting. I have my membership meeting that my members and everybody has to approve everything. I have to present them with a full budget. I have to have all my paperwork by the end of May. So we are on a crunch to, if this gets approved at town meeting, be able to then get the money transferred over to us, us be able to get the maintenance records that we need so that we can move forward.
So I think it, this, the goal of this article is to transfer, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fantasy, is to transfer the money in the enterprise fund to Cranberry Village. I don't think it includes the truck. From what I've been told in the conversation I've been in, the truck was never part of that. I understand that the truck was purchased, there may have been some enterprise funds, I can't say there were none, but I think it was substantially Carver funds, correct? It was also maintained with Carver funds.
So, so before I go into the truck, let me just read the article so you'll hear it.
Okay, thank you.
To see if the town will vote to revoke its acceptance of the provisions of General Law Chapter 44, Section 53 F and a half, ceasing the operation of the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund as of July 1, 2023, and to close out said fund by appropriating the remaining fund balance for the purpose of reimbursing residents of Cranberry Village for amounts they paid to the town for operation of the Cranberry Village wells prior to June 30th, 2023, and to authorize a treasurer to pay the said fund balance to the Cranberry Village Residents Association or take any other action related there too. So that's the article, to, to transfer these funds back, because they came from your pocket and the pocket of others. As to the truck, so the truck is a 12-year-old truck, and it was purchased with one-third the town's funds, one-third the North Carver Water District funds, and one-third the Cranberry Village funds. Now, the, the North Carver Water District funds and the, and the town funds are basically town money.
Yeah.
So two-thirds were done by the town money. For 12 years, it's been maintained at the cost of the town.
Okay.
For that truck. Dave estimates the truck to be valued at $5,000 to $8,000 for the years and the amount of miles and so forth. And he maintains that he needs that truck in his fleet, because that truck is used for plowing, for road repairs, and for many other things that the town uses it for. And, and it feels very strongly that it should stay in the town.
Okay.
So that's, that's going to be my recommendation, because the town already paid two-thirds of that truck.
Okay.
And also maintained it for 12 years.
Okay, so I guess part of my question is, how, how is that an appropriate disbursement of those funds? To purchase the, if those funds were set up to maintain the wells, how is taking a third of it, the truck cost? How is that an appropriate way to spend that money?
Yeah, so I think it came out of a town meeting article. If anybody was around back then, that's what Dave thinks. It was a town meeting article that, that actually set it up with this one-third, one-third, one-third. It may have just been an agreement of the three parties still.
Because I know that they bill for, for everything from the enterprise fund. You know what I mean? Like if they went and they did any maintenance work over there, there was always general ledger charges and, and things paid back to the town's appropriate, you know, departments. So I just assumed that the plowing of that area, that one road in, one road out, would have been handled the same way, right? If, if, if DPW went over there and they spent, you know, two hours plowing, they're going to bill us when they bill for their time back. So how do we know we weren't billed twice? See, this is what I mean. It, it becomes finding out what was actually spent strictly for the wells and not is a very sticky, you know, wicked to have to try to sort through. So I, I get that this is the situation, you know, the whole well situation is crazy because it's really not a big paper trail. But I just want to make sure that everything is, you know, set, we get all the information, we get, we get what we're entitled to. I mean, I don't think, you know, 280 people should purchase equipment for the Town of Carver that, you know, everybody benefits from, but only a certain few paid for. And that's, that's the way it was presented to me, that our enterprise fund paid for the truck. This is the first I'm hearing about a third, a third, and a third.
No, I think town council was trying to get in touch with your attorney to discuss this, and still waiting to connect. Is that correct, Ray?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so...
When was the last time you reached out to him?
My colleague reached out to him today.
Oh.
Mr. Corbo, if you could just make sure you speak into the microphone.
Sorry.
So you reached out to him today, and you haven't heard back from him yet?
That, that's correct, but, you know, the purpose of us reaching out to him was to convey the, the town sentiment that, you know, at this point in time, after the passage of, of 12 years, this is the town's truck. We know for certain that two-thirds of it was purchased with town funds, and in the interim, the truck was maintained over the course of those 12 years with town funds. The truck, since the, the maintenance of the, the wells has been taken over by a, an outside party that we contract with, they're not using the truck for that purpose, but they are still using it for other town purposes. So as things stand right now, you know, the, the proposed town meeting warrant article is to transfer to the residents of Cranberry Village any funds that are remaining in that enterprise fund at the end of the, the fiscal year. I don't have a firm number on that at this point, but we're looking at something in the range of $275,000. So, so those funds would be transferred to Cranberry Village for the purpose of continuing on with maintenance of the fund. And we would roll that into the purchase and sale agreement that has the criteria that if the, the wells are no longer used for that purpose, then the property would revert back to the town. If there is other equipment or assets, I guess, that, that you are expecting to be transferred as part of this transaction, you know, we really need to know that, because the issue is that when we went to town meeting last year, we were not made aware that there was an expectation of a transfer of funds to go along with this property. And we have numerous emails between us and your attorney, and he never mentioned that there was going to be a transfer of funds, and certainly never mentioned a transfer of funds in the neighborhood of $275,000. And so, you know, we don't want to be in a situation where we go to town meeting, we get the authorization to transfer these funds, and then we hear that there are some other assets that you're expecting to get that are not covered. And so, the, you know, my understanding is the board is willing to work with you, but we need a full disclosure, and everyone needs to be on the same page as to exactly what is being trans.
In 2019, the very first meeting that we had, and I believe you were at that meeting, everything was disclosed right there. Everything was there. The enterprise fund and the truck. Since 2019, every conversation I have had in regards to this, whether it be through email or through personal conversation, has always included. I don't think anybody sitting here can honestly say, this is the first time you ever heard the words enterprise fund or truck come out of my mouth.
No, and the goal...
I even believe I spoke about it at last town meeting. So not that anybody should be pointing fingers or anything, but it was not Cranberry Village that dropped the ball on putting together the town warrant and the funds.
And, and the goal tonight is to get this, the money from the enterprise fund, get this...
Those are the two things that I've asked for. There's no surprise. Those are the two things I've asked for from the beginning. You just explained the truck, that, that situation. This is, like I said, the first that I heard of it. So if that's the way that that is, you know, that's fine. You're welcome. And, you know, we can move on with, you know, but I am going to tell you, the, the money between now and when we get that money, I need every single thing accounted for. I need to know all the expenditures that come, are coming from that enterprise fund, all the i's dotted, all the t's crossed, where every penny is, is going. Because to hear that there's a big lump sum and then to turn around and get much less is going to have to be accounted for.
Mr. Fantasy, could, can you work with Ms. McCall to set up a, a meeting to get her whatever record she needs for maintenance and whatever else?
We'll work with Dave and with Finance Department.
Yeah, that's fine. And I spoke, like I said, I spoke to town, to Small Waters, and the girl was going to send me everything they had. And she said, you know, touch back at the end of the week, and I did. And then I think it was because they are contracted with the town, so they, you know what I mean, to be able to send everything to me. So I think a phone call from whoever to them saying, yeah, that's fine, she's got my email, she has all the information that I'm looking for, I think that'll be a quick way to get us a lot of the records. Because like I said, we are on a, just a big crunch.
We, we understand. Please, please let us know. We, we want to work with you to get through everything.
Yeah, I'm hoping to be able to get the money and, and at least that part of it done and set up, because I have to open up a bank account, we have to get all that by the end of April. And then that'll give us a few more weeks that we'll be able to work on getting the other maintenance records so that we can put together our budget.
Mr. Fantasy, or perhaps Mr. Corbo, as far as Mr. Belvin's earlier point about wording regarding the care and maintenance of the water system, is that something we need in this article?
I, I don't see why. So we're, we're doing a purchase and sales agreement. The wells are going back to Cranberry Village. For the last, what, 40 years, the wells only can be used to Cranberry Village. So to put in their verbiage that we can only ever be a resident-owned community, we can never, the way we're structured and everything through state, we can never sell that property to Joe Smith Builder and do 40Bs. We can't do it. You know what I mean? We can't, it can never be done. So to have that verbiage and put the control or that back to the town that says, you can only do this, and, and if so, we get, is pointless. There's no reason to do that. You didn't have it when you guys got that. When you guys got the well, you didn't have any of that. You guys got, the Carver got the wells to try to put water everywhere, to bring it over to Deeks, just, and, and none of that was feasible. So this is the way that it's been for 40 years. It's the way it's going to bid, be long after all of us have gone. And the only ones looking for water at that point will be the cockroaches, because they're the only ones that are going to survive forever. So there's, there's, to put all of these other stipulations, we have a purchase and sales agreement already done. You want to add to it, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. And I'm not here to, to get into a debate or negotiation with you over the purchase and sale agreement, but it's my understanding from day one that the transfer of the land was going to be subject to a condition that if it was ever not going to be used as a water supply, that it would revert back to the town.
And it's already in the purchase and sales agreement.
Okay, then we have nothing to, to argue about.
Well, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying, you stated earlier now about funds or other stuff coming. My understanding is the purchase and sales agreement is already all written up. It's already...
And does it address the funds?
I'm sorry?
But it doesn't address the funding?
Okay, well...
Well, but it shouldn't address the funding. The funding is a dollar. That's what the town's going to get. The funding, the enterprise fund, doesn't need to be in the purchase and sales agreement. And in my opinion, neither does the fact that if we're ever not who we are now, the land comes back, or the wells come back to Carver. I mean, I don't understand, just now, because we're talking about the money, why it would have to be put into the purchase and sales agreement?
Mr. Chair, through you? Why wouldn't it be in the purchase and sale agreement? We have an agreement to transfer assets. It's a contract. The contract has to include all of the terms of the contract, which would include everything that is being transferred by the Town of Carver. In my opinion, and I'm advising the board on this, that is a necessary element of the agreement. And if you're not willing to, to put that in writing as part of the agreement, you know, I mean, the board can make a decision here, but, but legally speaking, I don't see how the, the town can be authorized to transfer funding to you without a written agreement.
So, but that's, I guess that's a question. Are you putting in a dollar amount? Because there's no guarantee you're going to get that dollar amount back ever, if, if it ever does come back, because that money is going to be used to maintain the wells. Like, we know we've had an engineer out there right off the bat, there's going to be almost $50,000 just to update what has never been done over there. So that's my concern, is that your agreement is going to say, these are how many, how much funds are going, this is how much funds have to come back, instead of just whatever the balance is of that reserve account.
Mr. Chair?
Am I confused?
You are. With all due respect, I didn't say it had to be a specific dollar amount. What I said was that the agreement has to take into consideration the transfer of the funds. And so if at the time that the purchase and sale agreement is executed, the balance in the account is not known, then it can include language that says, the transaction shall include whatever the balance is in the fund as of July 1st, 2023. That's the, that's what the, the agreement is. And frankly, I feel like we're arguing for the sake of arguing at this point.
No, because...
The board is here and has agreed to put this in front of town meeting, and I haven't heard anyone suggest that they intend anything other than to turn over all of the remaining funds to Cranberry Village.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not questioning that they are. My concern is, so, the way the enterprise fund is set up is it's extra payment from all of these years that Cranberry Village has put into this account, okay? That's going to continue moving forward. So it's 280 homes paying a water bill for all of these years, and just like if you paid extra on your electric bill or whatever, you would have a credit balance. That's basically what we have. We have a credit balance. That's what that enterprise fund is. So it's continually going to be built on Cranberry Village residents paying over what the, the cost of the, the water is. That's where the money came from. So it would just be like if you had a credit on your account for your electric, you would, you wouldn't give that back to them, you would use it up, or vice versa. But yes, I see what you're saying, so yes, I agree that the verbiage could be in there, as long as there's no monetary amount that it has to be set at, because we don't know when and if they'll ever be. I mean, the wells could blow up next week, and if we don't have the money, or the money isn't, you know what I mean? We don't know what it's going to ever cost to maintain those wells. So as long as, like I said, in the warrant, everything is covered this time, so we don't have to come back, and, you know, there's no monetary amount. It's not like you're giving us 275 if it ever comes back, you have to get 275 back.
Okay, so I guess my question, Mr. Fantasy, I'll ask you, and you can defer to Mr. Corbo if you would. Based on Mr. Belvin's point earlier, do we need to make any changes to the wording in the article that we have in front of us, in your opinion?
I don't think so. I think that's, the wording covers all that.
Okay, and Mr. Corbo, are you in agreement?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, I am in agreement, and, and I am in agreement with the fact that because these were funds that were paid by the residents of Cranberry Village for the purpose of maintaining the well, and if there's money left over, once the town gives those up, then those are their funds and should go back to them. And, and I wouldn't see any reason why the funds themselves would revert back to the town for, for any reason.
Good. Are there questions from members of the board?
Well, I, it may be out of line. Can I ask Mr. Belvin to, to see if we've addressed his, his point? It just concerned me with, if it comes back to us, is it going to come back usable?
Yeah, I think that probably is a little... Yeah, I think that probably is a little bit out of what we usually do here. Mr. Belvin made his point. We've had a couple of attorneys address it. Do you have a question for Mr. Corbo?
No, I, no, it just, if it comes back to us, it has to be usable. So I don't, if that's been addressed, then great.
Any other question? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of funds to Cranberry Village.
Well, well, I guess, so the first motion will be to place Article Five. I'm sorry, Article, we're out of order here. Article seven, thank you, Article Seven on the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of placing Article, oh, sorry, discussion? Hearing on, all in favor of placing Article Seven on the warrant?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, is there a motion to recommend Article Seven?
I move that we recommend Article Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Our hearing on, all in favor of Article Seven? Aye. Opposed? All right, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bacall.
Thank you.
All right. We will go back a little bit now to the first item that was on that five fifteen agenda, which is Article Number Five Cemetery Perpetual Care Transfer. And I'll read Article Five to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund for cemetery improvements and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative related thereto. Mr. Fantasy, I think we had this on a previous agenda, and there were some questions.
Yeah, and I reached out to John Woods, who was overseeing the project there. And he said that the money is two hundred thousand of perpetual care fund right now. And a hundred and fifty of that is being used to put a new section on on the central cemetery.
Okay.
So that's the use of those funds.
All right. There any questions from the board on this?
Mr. Chair, I also wanted to clarify that I think Mr. Carter had a question on where those funds come from. They come from the sale of cemetery lots.
All right. Let's see, is there a motion to put Article Five on the warrant?
I move that we put Article Five Cemetery Perpetual Care on the warrant.
Is there a second? Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing on, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Is there a motion to recommend Article Five?
I move that we recommend Article Five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next is Article Six. That is the North Carver Water District motion to, article to repay the town. And I will read it. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of two hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and six thousand dollars, sorry, two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and ninety-five cents from the North Carver Water District Enterprise Fund to fund twenty-nine Plymouth County ARPA for the purchase, for the purpose of reimbursing the North Carver Water District's share of the cost incurred for the purchase of the membranes needed to operate the North Carver Water District's wells or to take any other action related thereto. Is there a motion toward Article Six on the warrant?
I move we put Article Six on the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to put Article Six on the warrant. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Is there a motion to recommend Article Six?
I move that we recommend Article Six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend Article Six. Discussion, questions on the board on this? Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add on this one?
No.
No? All right. All in favor of recommending Article Six? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Let's see, next, let's see, we did number seven. Next is Article Fourteen. Let me just scroll forward to that one here. Fourteen, Article Fourteen is a new bylaw, the Abutter Lot Sales Program. And I will read that, Article Fourteen. To see if the town will vote to establish a tax foreclosure of butter lots sales program by which the custodian of tax foreclosure properties is authorized to dispose of, by sale, to direct to butters properties eligible to be disposed of through the Abutter Lot Sales Program. And it would have the following criteria. An assessed value at or below the land of low value foreclosure valuation limit as established annually by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Division of Local Services are in residential neighborhoods with a previously owned building on at least one side, are not needed by the town for open space or any other public use, and are not part of a larger vacant parcel which can be developed. Mr. Fantasy, would you like to update us on this?
Yes, so this is to clean up lots that are more or less been foreclosed on and just just not being maintained and becomes an eyesore in neighborhoods and everything else. This, to to qualify, you'd have to have a property owner who has a home or building next to it, a budding that that land. And and there's qualifications on what the land can be used for. So it would be a garden, side yard, landscape, open space, off-street parking, garden or shed, septic improvements, and are in addition to the abutters existing structure. The goal is to give the property owners a chance to acquire a vacant parcel, improve their current parcel, and encourage private ownership and maintenance of the land that's not suitable for development by the town. So, so it's really keep, keep these in in repair and 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 not be a blight on the neighborhood.
Okay. Are there questions from the board on this? Mr. Corbo?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, through you. So I haven't seen this particular version of this yet until now. But in in my opinion, I think that this article would need a little bit more work, at least before it could be in the form of a motion. Because it's, it's sort of lacking in detail as to what, how this procedure would actually work. I have seen examples of this, mostly in cities. But I know that there are some other towns that are starting to work on these as well. And so if it would please the board, I I would suggest that you you not vote to put this on in the form it's in now, but that you give me an opportunity to give you a sample and work with, I guess, the treasurer collector to see if we can get it in a more final form.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. Any, any questions on the board on that?
Do we need a motion to table?
I don't think we need a motion to table it, do you?
No.
It's almost a fantasy. No, we'll just put it forward for our our next meeting. Do you think you might be able to get it to us by our next meeting, Mr. Corbo, two weeks from now?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next is Article Twenty-Six, the Capital Outlaw Bylaw Change. Capital Outlaw Bylaw Change.
Outlaw.
I'll try it again. The Capital Outlay Bylaw Change. All right, third time's a charm. And I don't see any information in what I have in front of me in the warrant.
Yeah, the the meeting Thursday night.
We don't have anything.
So this will move forward to the next.
All that struggle, get the wording right, just for, for nothing. Okay. All right, well, thank you. All right, so that dispenses with our our items for town meeting. And we are well ahead of our agenda here. So our next item is a six o'clock, Chapter Sixty-One A, the Right of First Refusal for Walker Road Assessor Map fourteen dash ten dash one. Is there anyone here? I know it's a little early. Is there anyone here for that property? I don't, I don't see anyone. So we should probably wait on that and give them a chance to show up. We also have the Chapter Sixty-One A, Right of First Refusal for Thirty-One R Main Street Assessors Map sixty-seven dash seven dash zero. Is there anyone here for that property? Folks? Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chair.
If we're going to go into this now, six, it's scheduled for six ten. I just don't know if other towns or resident members wanted to come here for this.
Oh, well, this is not a, this is not a public hearing. This is just a regular agenda item. Do you see any issues with proceeding, Mr. Fantasy? If you do, I'll postpone it.
No, no.
Okay. All right, folks.
Good evening, Carver Select Board members. I'm Allison Sand. I'm Plus Powers Director of Project Development. Here with me is is Rick Novak, our our counsel. We appreciate that your time is tight and we'll intend to be brief here. As you know, the Cranberry Point Energy Storage Project has been before the town for some time. And the land on which we propose to build is assessed under MGL Chapter Sixty-One A, Section Fourteen. As you also know, Section Fourteen of that statute gives the town a purchase option under the circumstances and timeline set forth in that statute. On January thirteenth of this year, we filed a notice of intent to convert under Section Fourteen, triggering that purchase option process. Since then, the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and the assessors have all recommended that the town not seek to purchase the property. We're here tonight to respectfully request that the Select Board formally waive all purchase rights under MGL Chapter Sixty-One A, Section Fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
Okay, no. All right. Questions on the board?
Well, I have a I read the email that Ms. Norma sent us. And I know that things can be interpreted differently. But the way that I read it is that a public hearing should be done before this decision is made. Again, things can be interpreted differently, but that's how I read it. So I believe that we should put this off and have a public hearing. Since it appears that legally that would be good. And especially since people have expressed desire to speak about it. So I think we should do that for the residents.
Thank you, Ms. Bogart. Anyone else?
I just wanted to know if we could hear from counsel on his interpretation of that issue.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So under the statute, Chapter Sixty-One A, Section Fourteen, there are several steps that have to occur in order for the town to exercise its option to purchase the property. So the first step has been taken here, which is a notification from the property owner that they intend to change the use of the land from a use that is authorized for the protections of Chapter Sixty-One A to some other use that is not. You've received that notice. That then puts the ball in your court to move on to the next step. And because this is not a, a sale of Chapter Sixty-One A land, it's a conversion, there is a process that has to occur in order for the value of the property to be established. And that process first requires the Select Board to provide the property owners with an appraisal. The property owners then have an opportunity to provide a competing appraisal. And if the properties do not agree, or I should say, the parties do not agree, then there's an opportunity for a third appraisal. Once that, the value of the property is established, then the town has a period of time to determine whether or not it wishes to exercise its option. It's at that point that the requirement for a public hearing is triggered. And in order for the town to say yes, then it has to have a public hearing within what is a hundred and twenty day period. However, if tonight, the board decides that it does not wish to move forward with the next step of the process, then there is no requirement that there be a public hearing.
All right, so so the first step is for the board to decide whether they want to exercise their right of first refusal or or not?
Well, to at least go forward with the process. You know, if the board decides, yes, we are interested in moving forward with the process, then, like I said, we'd have this exchange of appraisals and then a public hearing before you make the final decision. But you can decide right now, no, the board is not interested in exercising its right of its option to purchase, in which case it ends and the the option is declined, and there is no need to do anything further.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo. All right. Anything else from the board?
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the process as explained by Mr. Corbo in getting appraisals for the property.
All right. Is there, we have a motion. Is there a second on that motion? I don't, I don't hear a second. Is there any other motion? Okay, well, we make a motion and then we'll, we can discuss it and then we could.
I make a motion that we not exercise our right of first refusal for Thirty-One R Main Street.
So is there, we have a motion and a second. I will have discussion. Mr. Carter?
So I guess getting on with the appraisal process, I guess. Am I correct in saying it's been permitted as a battery storage facility? So if you, that land, so if you were to go out and get an appraisal process, and as you said, we go out and get an appraisal, isn't it like highest and best use? So is the highest and best use a storage farm? So we would go out and we would get an appraisal, and let's just say it's, I don't know, a million dollars. And the people buying it might say it's worth more. And they go out and get an appraisal, again, based on highest and best use being a storage facility, and they might have two million dollars. So it it's not like we would say our appraisal, it's farmland, it's worth a hundred thousand dollars. That's what we think the available, the best available use is for the property. So so no matter what the appraisal is, it's not as land in its current state as right now. Am I getting that right?
That that is, through you, Mr. Chair, that that is correct. So, you know, the the concept of of highest and best use is, you know, what is the value of the property in the eyes of a prospective purchaser? And a prospective purchaser is going to look at, you know, what is the, the, the ma, how am I going to maximize my investment in this property? It may be as a battery storage facility. It may be as as something else. We would have to look at what are the zoning bylaws of the town? Or the the appraiser would look at, what are the zoning bylaws of the the town? What types of uses are allowed? And what is the value of the property based on the the types of uses that are allowed? Now, we can't engage in, you know, sort of outrageous speculation, you know, based on on changes in law that may never happen or things like that. But, you know, you can sort of reasonably forecast based on the way that the law is, based on, you know, allowable uses, setbacks, wetlands, you know, Board of Health regulations, things like that. This is what we expect it can be used for. And then they would go out and they would get comparable properties, preferably within Carver or in the surrounding area, and say, based on these comparable properties, you know, this is our opinion of the value. And yes, I would fully expect that if you get an opinion of the value at a certain number, they're going to get an appraiser who's going to say that it's much higher. And that's why we would get the third appraisal to, you know, most likely, you know, come down hopefully someplace in in the middle. But that's generally what the the process would entail.
Thank you.
I'm not sure why Cranberry Point is allowed to be speaking tonight because it's my understanding that this property is owned by the trust under the Western. And as such, it should be the Western's here speaking tonight.
We have their.
Unless this has been sold.
Thank you, Ms. Dorah.
Sir.
We have their permission to speak tonight as their tenant. Thank you.
Again, until they come and speak and we're given, and additionally, that means it's in a trust and under Sixty-One A, and I'm sure that you will agree with.
Thank you, Ms. Dorah. I'll ask counsel for an opinion and we'll blow this out.
Under Sixty-One A, because it is in our trust, it is mandatory that a public hearing be held.
Mr. Corbo, do you, do you feel that these folks have a right to speak tonight?
Yes, I do, but thank you.
Okay.
You also made material representations at the twenty eighteen town meeting to get this.
Okay, Ms. Norma, please, thank you.
If it helps.
We will proceed with. Okay, Ms. Norma, please. Thank you. All right, well, we will proceed with...
Knock down. Start to make your job.
All right.
This is ridiculous.
All right, Ms. Norma.
If you can't do your job...
All right, Ms. Norma, thank you. We'll proceed with the town's discussions. Ms., Mr. Carter, did he answer your question?
Um, yes, yes, he didn't. I'm, I guess, I'd love to know what that price could be, but it sounds like...
The money water?
Yes, sir, what is...
The price of the property should not be...
Okay, all right. The, the board can, Mr., I'm sorry, sir, that's not a point of war. Mr. Carter can ask, make any statement he wants. He can discuss what, what he'd like to discuss with the board. Mr. Carter, please proceed.
All right, just looking at going through the lovely town budget process that I've just been through, my concern as a sole member of the board is that the purchase of this, this property would be too much.
Just make sure you speak in private.
That, that purchasing this property would, would prevent the town providing, you know, full services to all the residents of Carver if we went to try to purchase this property at a, at a, at a best value purchase price. So that's just my opinion.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, first of all, I, I think I misspoke in my motion. I would like to make the motion that we, we exercise our right of first refusal and not purchase the property. Just to be very clear. That's first. And secondly, I agree with Mr. Carter. I think over the years, my experience with open space planning as the town's former conservation agent, this is not really the way, in my opinion, that we need to go about acquiring open space. This is, this...
Mr. Freiny, absolutely.
The town showed up at the last town meeting and voted against...
Mr. Freiny, the board is discussing the issue. Please, Mr. Freiny. Please, please proceed, Ms. You.
Thank you. Secondly, the only other use really that this could, that I could see being here allowable would be a single-family home, which, you know, there's nothing wrong with a single-family home, except that it's usually tax-negative if there are kids. I was one of those. So, I mean, I think that the open space plan that we're working on currently has identified areas in town that the town might want to pursue. And in my reading of that plan, this is not one of them.
Could I just ask you to, to read your motion again, kind of? I think you, you, you said that you wanted to exercise the town's option right of first refusal, and then you said you didn't want to purchase the property, which...
Correct. So I'd, I'd like to make a motion not to exercise our right of first refusal. Is that the way?
If we could, Mr. Chair, through you, if I could make a suggestion of a form of a motion, it might be
Thank you.
move that the board vote to decline the option to purchase the property. Thank you.
I move that we decline the option to purchase the property.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
Just quick, okay. I know how this is going to go, and this has nothing to do with the project. This predates, this, if Mr. Bellman were here, he'd know, I had to have this comment for years. I hate when things like this come to us when they've already been permitted by other boards, because then it forces our hand. We had this discussion, Bob, before you were here, because it was happening when the prior town administrator was here. People are coming to us, asking us to not purchase land for things that are already done. And, and I know that, that I and a former member just felt like the board had the hands, our hands tied, and I just hate that this is happening again. I would like to see what we talked about years ago happen. When, when a project is starting and they know it's going to happen, they come to the board first. So, just a bummer that things haven't changed.
Well, I think they come to the town, and it, it gets out to the various boards that have, have a decision in this, have a, have a right to, to offer their, their opinion. So I think that's what, that's what happened in this case. That's what happens when the 61As come to the, come to the town. They...
Then the project comes to us, and, and it seems like we're saying no to a project when, in my opinion, that's not the case. My decision on this has nothing to do with any sort of project. It's the land.
And, and my decision doesn't have anything to do with the project either. It's also the land. I don't really see this in that strict sense as a useful piece of open space that we could really make something out of for the town.
And I, and I think that's the way it is for, speaking for myself, I think that's the way it is for, for all of us when we make our decisions on these, these pieces of land. It's what, you know, what can we do with the land? But, all right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? All right. All in favor of the motion to decline our option to purchase?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Three to one. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Dandies is here. Don Dandies is here.
I can tell you, when you're late so much, you can go and rock. I have to say, no representative people are...
No, how many lawsuits does the town have to give with before you come to the census?
All right, at this point, we will, again, we have our six o'clock item, the 61A, the right of first refusal for Walker Road, assessors map 14-10-1. Is there anyone here to speak on that property? All right, it's not quite six o'clock yet.
He is here.
He is here?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't see you there.
I wasn't sure you meant to speak, so...
Welcome.
Thank you.
Just tell us a little bit about this?
Okay, so the, the property is, is not actually changing. It's not changing ownership. It's a cranberry bog that I have owned since 1984, and I am looking to get my son on the property. Hopefully, to create some sort of a succession, but also, as I get closer to retirement, my hope is to create a lot for both my kids. I did that on 58. And this one's up on Walker Road. And so it's basically, we got a construction loan on the both my name and my son's.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions from the board on this? And again, Mr. Fantasy, we have recommendations on this not to exercise our options, correct?
Correct, all, all three.
All right. Is there a motion from the board?
I move that we decline our option to purchase the property on Walker Road map 14 lot 10-1.
So we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the appointment of a special police officer, Scott Peterson. Chief, welcome.
Good evening.
Evening.
As I've done before, I have the very similar language to every time I've come before you to ask to appoint another special police officer. So I'll probably just skip through it, since I think I've explained it to you guys more than enough. But the problem of filling details continues, and getting good police officers to work continues. The gentleman I have tonight is Assistant Superintendent at the Sheriff's Department. He's been a special police officer of the town of Plimpton for years. He's been to the NA Academy. He's been through all the Bridge Academy, and he's, he would be a welcome addition to our team. Scott Peterson is, would, would like to join our team and help us work through some of the details. And I would ask that you vote to put him on. I vetted him, and like I said, we've worked with him for years. He's worked in other capacities with us through, through BCI at the Sheriff's Department, and through as a Plimpton Special Police Office.
Thank you. Is there a motion from the board?
I move that we appoint Scott Peterson, a special police officer for the town of Carver.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Carter, do you know? No? All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
As always, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. And you may want to, you may want to stay right there, because next on our agenda is it is continuing, our continuing discussion of the King Richard's Fair traffic plan with updates from Public Safety and Fair Attorney Daniel Walsh. And before we proceed, just, Mr. Corbo, we appreciate you being here with us tonight. But, Mr. Fantasy, do you see anything further on our agenda that you think we may mean, Mr. Corbo, for? So you're free to go if you'd like to. You're always welcome to stay, and... Great, that, thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend, before you begin, I would know that we had asked Ms. Sedley from KRF to be on a Zoom connection with us tonight about this. And I know that was, the time was about 6:20. I know that Zoom was open. I'm not sure, you know, if she's prepared to be on.
Okay, you know what? I know she was, this is scheduled for 6:45. Why don't we?
6:25.
Uh, 6:25, I'm sorry. That's, that's right. So if, if you don't mind, why don't we, why don't we put this off for a little while and come back to it at 6:00?
And I don't know how we're going to actually get that Zoom connection up. That's, I guess, technology.
Well, what we'll do is we'll take a, we'll take a short recess, when we, we know she's available, and we'll get that, we'll get that all set up.
Thank you very much. Sorry to change the plans.
No, that's, that's fine. Why don't we wait and see if they're available? And we'll move on to a announcement of the Town Administrator Evaluation Results. So recently, the board evaluated our town administrator, Robert Fantasy. This is his first evaluation since he's been the permanent town administrator. And I, I'm very happy to announce that he's, his evaluation, evaluation went very well. He was evaluated on a number of items by the board on a scale of one to five, one being the lowest, and five being the best. And his average rating for all the items combined in the, in the assessment were 4.036. So that's outstanding. And I, I might be wrong. I'm just going from memory. I didn't look this up. But I think that might be the highest number for a town administrator since, since I've been on the board. So congratulations, Mr. Fantasy, that obviously speaks to the job you've been, you've been doing here, and, uh, thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank the board for guiding me through this year. It's been a difficult year, up and on, but, but I've enjoyed it immensely. So, thank you.
No, thank you. And while you've got that microphone in your hand, you may want to move on to your town administrator. You have no, nothing for the update this evening?
No, I was working on the budget and other things.
All right.
So I'll, next, next meeting, I'll have a long update.
All right, thank you. Do we have any update on our Zoom attendee? No? All right, all right, that's fine. Let's see, we'll move on to Minutes, Minutes, Licenses, Topics Not Reasonably Anticipated by the Chair 48 Hours in Advance of the Meeting. We have the Minutes of February 21st, 2023. Is there a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I, I'm sorry to say, I have not had a chance to look at those.
All right. Why don't we hold those off till the, till the next meeting?
I can skim them.
Well, you know what? Why don't we take a brief recess? Well, see if we can get our Zoom attendee in. We'll come back to the minutes after that. Give everyone a chance to, to relook at them, and, and we'll, we'll do that. So Area 58, we'll be in a brief recess, all right? All right, we are back in session, and we're ready to move forward with our next agenda item, which is our continuing discussion on the King Richard's Fair traffic plan. We have an update from Public Safety, and we also have representatives from the fair introducing us. Folks, if you could introduce yourself for the folks at home?
Go ahead, sir. Hi, my name is Ryan Roy. I am the Production Director and Office Manager at King Richard's Fair. To my left is Dan Walsh, the fair attorney. And on Zoom joining us is Ame Shapiro Sedley, who is our co-producer and general manager.
All right, great. Thank you, folks. And we're also joined again by Chief Mark Duffley. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Captain.
All right. Chief, if you'd like to start us off?
Certainly. So, since our last meeting, I can say that everybody has put in a great deal of effort and a lot of work to make sure that we're moving forward in a positive direction, and I believe that we are. That discussion is ongoing, and we've come up with a lot of good, positive input on that. The fair has been very cooperative in moving forward with the Emergency Operations Plan that is being developed to, to cover different contingencies that we might encounter there. That's not a public plan. It's a plan that we keep to ourselves, so we know what's going on, but so that we're all working on the same sheet of music when, when something bad happens, if it does, and we're all prepared to do that. And I think the fair deserves a lot of credit for moving forward on that. They've done a lot of hard work on it, and I'm very impressed with where it's going. We've had a good discussion at the last meeting. I'm slowing down because Elaine said that I talk too fast. We had a good discussion at the last meeting about alternate parking lots and how we would accomplish that. The fair has already spoken with Mr. Neef in the school about if they could help out with that. And that's an ongoing discussion, but I believe there's been a lot of positive progress in that. In addition, they brought up that they've worked, moved forward on online dated ticketing, as we requested, and they, they're saying that that looks like it's up and running, and it'd be hard to see if that works until we're actually there doing it. But I, but I, I trust that they are working on it, and they've been working very diligently to get that accomplished. So I feel that we're making good progress. I think there's still some work to be done, but I think working together as we have done, I think we will come up with a good product.
Well, thank you. I think we all recognize that the key to solving any issues that are out there is that we all work together to solve those problems. So I think it's, it's great to hear that we've been able to come together and, and do this. And I appreciate you all being back here with us tonight. Do you folks have any, anything to add before we have discussions from the board?
I would like to just echo your comments as well, Mr. Chair, that it has to be a cooperative process, and I think it really has. I think, and like to thank the chief for taking the lead here. He made his expectations clear. I think King Richard's Fair stepped up. I know that they've put a lot of work into this Emergency Operations Plan, knowing that the goal is we've got to meet the needs of the community. So, you know, I thank the chief. I think there's still more work to be done. But Ame, excuse me, just getting a little recall, sorry. Ame is here and would like to address some of the more specific parts of the plans and the plans looking forward.
All right, great. Ame?
Sure, I think actually Ryan wanted to speak first, and then we were kind of going to go into all the nitty-gritty of what we've been doing.
All right.
We'll let Mr. Roy take, take the stand for a second.
All right. Thanks, thanks again for having us here tonight. It is important, obviously, that, that we're here, that we're represented, and that you guys are listening as well. And we want you to know that we're also listening. So that's, it's, it's a great thing that we're here, and thank you for that. That's first and foremost. For those folks that, obviously, you guys know who and what King Richard's Fair is. For folks that may be at home that might watch this later, or even anybody that's in here tonight that does not know what King Richard's Fair is, I'd like to just give you a quick little bit on that, and then maybe address some stuff that I've heard in past meetings, just to clarify some stuff, maybe. So King Richard's Fair is going into our 42nd season in 2023, and it is family-owned and operated. It was first founded by Richard Shapiro, who has since passed, and his wife Bonnie Shapiro. Bonnie Shapiro is still our producer, and she runs the show along with her daughter, Ame Shapiro Sedley. It is a, an 18-day outdoor event. It is very much weather-based, and that's, that's an interesting sentence, because folks are just always, you know, assume that maybe the business just automatically runs, or the business is automatically open. And because we are an outdoor event, it does become weather-dependent to us. As you, as you all know, as folks at home may know, Carver experiences weather. A lot of the land around here experiences that weather at the same time. So that becomes a thing for us in daily operations. So if there is extreme weather or things like that, it's not something where we could open because we can't put folks in danger. And that's also very important. So there are days that sometimes we can't open, and that obviously affects business when you're only open 18 days out of the year. In terms of what does the fair do for the community? First and foremost, we don't want to separate ourselves from the community. We're part of this community. It's something that we're proud to be part of. We like to call Carver our home. It's, it's, we're noted. When you look us up, we're in Carver mess, and it's a great place. So that's first and foremost. Second, we bring a lot of jobs to the community. Though we're only open 18 days, the majority of folks that are employed within the festival itself are from Carver. And I know that's something that's come up with other things in the town, just from the past meetings that I've attended here now, that, excuse me, Ms. Bogart.
So good. I'm informal.
You've acknowledged that that's something that's important to you, to make sure that there are jobs within Carver, or that, that folks that are in Carver are getting jobs first for different things. And that's something that we look at as well. And that's something that we look at as well. Um, so for many folks in this town, if you've been here all your life, if you've known this, this has been a first job for a lot of people. Um, and that's something that's, that's kind of cool. We're, we, we like that that's something that we can bring here. Um, it's not only the festival in terms of King Richard's Fair, what we own and what we the business itself has businesses within that. Um, there are world-class artisans that make up our event, our village. Um, and those folks also employ folks from the town. Um, and yes, it's not all just Carver folks that are employed, but it's the majority of folks that are from Carver that are employed at King Richard's Fair, which is a great thing. Um, in terms of other things that we do within the community, um, I know Ms. Huen's, one of your things, uh, that you've mentioned many times is Shane Gives Back. Um, and I'm not sure that folks know, but each year the fair donates food at the end of the season and that is the place that we donate to. And so for the past seven years, the, um, the year that we were, uh, closed due to COVID, uh, we have donated to Shane Gives Back and it's a wonderful organization. So if folks are watching, um, and they have the ability to do that, we encourage you to, we would also encourage you to donate there. It's, it is a truly great thing. Beyond that, um, we enjoy the working relationship that we have with folks, uh, like the police departments, the fire departments, the EMS, um, that work well, 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 beyond their worth. They're amazing. Actually, that, that's backwards. Their worth is well, 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 beyond anything that they do and have done. They, they're just constantly out there working, not only for our event, but we see them around town elsewhere. Um, it's led us to actually have a day at the fair, um, in honor of these folks. Um, it is our salute to safety. It happens each season. Um, it's been in effect now for 10 years. Um, and it's something where we welcome all folks that are from any police department, um, that could show propriety identification of their, uh, folks. These, uh, military, fire, EMS, first responders, um, are all admitted free of charge to our business. Um, and that's a pretty great thing as well. Uh, we certainly recognize those folks within the community and we want to give to them as well. On that note, we also, um, give to the community of Carver in terms of our very first day, we welcome all folks that live in Carver to come free of charge to our festival because we want you to know who we are, what we do, and what we bring here. Um, and one of the things that we bring and pride ourselves on is world-class entertainment. Um, I'm not sure that this is, may not be something that you all know, but at King Richard's Fair in Carver, Massachusetts, we have, uh, employed different entertainers, uh, that are uh, pretty amazing, from, uh, Emmy award-winning TV personalities, Oscar-winning, uh, actors. And currently, uh, we're hosting the latest, the latest form of entertainment, TikTok. Um, our, one of our great entertainers is Jack Leppiars, who's also known as, uh, Jack the Whip. Um, and he is employed with us. So it's folks come far and wide to see these people. Um, and they get to see them here in Carver. Um, and on top of that, they have, uh, also Guinness World Record holders and those records were set in Carver. So it is a pretty impressive thing. And when folks just think about King Richard's Fair, they think of, um, you know, maybe the costumes or, or whatever else, but there's so much more that goes into that. Um, it is something that is prepared for all year long. As soon as we close, we're, we're starting for the next season. Um, and Ame and Bonnie work tires tirelessly, um, to make sure that that stuff gets done. Um, and once again, we are happy to be continuing to work with you folks, um, to, to alleviate some of the stress that certainly has happened recently. So thanks for your time. And, uh, and I know that Ame has some more poignant stuff to this, but I just want to give some folks a little bit more information on this.
Thank you for that. Ame?
Thanks, Ryan. I appreciate it. Um, and we, we've been working really, really diligently, um, to come up with a plan that will make you, the select board, as well as our committee meeting, who's made up of the fire chief, the police chief, the EMS chief, the DPW chief, uh, and, um, Tom Walsh from the emergency management department. And we worked very well together last year when we came up with hiring the engineer firm and doing a traffic plan. And I know that, um, the traffic plan was very successful and I know that both, uh, Chief De Philly and, um, Chief, uh, Ryan, uh, attested to that. Um, we just had a couple of days that were crazy that then turned into us now having to work again together to come up with a other parking plan. Um, and, uh, we decided to work on this EOP plan so that all of the emergency responders, uh, including us and this event, in Carver, are all prepared if, God forbid, some emergency ever happened. Um, we're lucky, knock on wood, that in 41 years, that hasn't been the case. So we're hoping to continue with that, that luck. Um, we have, we had a meeting last week with the committee and, uh, exactly what Chief De Philly said. We, it was a good meeting. It was a productive meeting and, um, I want to thank Ryan too for helping with us a lot, that we came up with this 29-page emergency operating plan. Uh, we've developed a parking plan that includes auxiliary lots. We have I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, Bonnie and I did with, um, Superintendent Neef and Ryan Griffin and Marie, uh, from, you know, the Carver Public Schools and Busing. And we will be using, if we need it, the, uh, middle, Carver Middle High School as an auxiliary lot as our last lot if we need it. Um, and buses as well. And happy to pay the bus drivers to, to shuttle people to and from some of those auxiliary locations. Uh, the other thing that we did is it took about a four-month search to find the right company and the right fit for us to handle the ticketing. And we finally got that in place. And we are live and online with dated tickets. And I'm not going to lie, we've met with a lot of resistance from people that have been coming to the fair for all these years, not wanting to buy tickets, not understanding why they have to pick a date. And we're hopeful that this will be a good thing in the long run. And it will help everyone be prepared in terms of knowing an idea of who and when people will be coming. So, so far, we're, we're going forward with that. Um, I think it was mentioned in a previous um, select board meeting, wanting to know how the holiday sales had gone, which we had launched the, you know, I figure on Black Friday, uh, through the holiday season. And they were down, we were down by half because people didn't want to have to pick a date this far out. So we are, we're hopeful that it's going to work. We're optimistic that it will work and keeping our fingers crossed. So we're really moving in the right direction. I think that's the best thing to say. Uh, we hope that the board will be happy. Uh, again, we worked very well with the, uh, the local safety departments and, um, I feel that we have a very good working relationship with Chief De Philly, who's always on site helping us and, and so forth. So, and here, if you need to ask me a question, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, I just wanted to say this is kind of what we've done. We've been asked to do this. We've done this and we've done a bunch of things, uh, in addition.
Well, so thank you. And I think, I, I think hearing from all of you, it, it, this is exactly what we need to solve any issues down there, is everyone coming together and, and working together. So thank, thank all of you. Um, I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things that I brought up at the last meeting and that I'll open up to the, to the board. And a, a really big issue with me was the folks parked up and down Route 58 because that prevents, presents a real public safety hazard. And I understand that, that the folks at King Richard's Fair can't control if someone parks on, on Route 58, but it's a real issue. And I think one of the ways that we might be able to solve that issue, if, if somebody comes from out of town and the parking lot is full and they have their family in the car, they want to go to the fair and they're going to try to find a place to park. But I think if the, if the fair made it prominently featured on their website that, that you can't park on Route 58, uh, that might go a long way to, to, to solving that. If we make everyone aware that just, you can't, you can't do that. And chief, I would ask, I would ask your opinion on that, but I think that's a, that's a real issue with me.
Certainly. And I think that the fair has worked with us on these matters. We've talked about additional signage we're going to need if we have to use an alternative lot as to how to get people to an alternative lot. We can't, one of the problems we encountered last year was talking to each car that came by us. That's not going to work. So having good signage is going to be key to getting, moving traffic from the regular parking lots to the alternate parking lot. And in addition, we've talked with John Woods, we're going to have to put some no-parking signs up along the road is on, on our part. But I think asking the fair to cooperate by putting on their website the same thing, not to park along 58 to get to the alternate parking lots is, is key to that. And I think if we all work together, that's what we can accomplish.
Great, thank you. Ms. Huen?
And I think, and you've probably already thought of this, but if the fair not only says not to park on 58, but tells them where they can park, that would actually be very helpful. Um, and directions, something like that. Because not every, we know where the high school is, but not everybody does.
That's been part of, uh, Chief De Philly's plan, a progressive, like, on earth. Chief De Philly would like a, a progressive plan as far as the parking goes so that it's, it's clear, it's obvious. And hopefully, uh, the issues that existed in the past just never occur again.
And that was true.
Also, Ame, can I just bump real quick? And I think you might, we might be, we might be about to say the same thing. Um, we also want to let you know that this is something that was, we did have plans in place. Um, we did not anticipate what happened. I don't think that any of us anticipated that. Um, and not for naught, not just out of sight, out of mind. Um, it, it happened to be a wonderful weather day. Um, the weekend before, we had, we had closed. That was one of the things that we, I had just previously said, where some days we close. Um, so that day had closed. The following day was, the temperatures were in the 30s, so it wasn't ideal. People didn't want to be outside. And the next weekend was beautiful. Um, and so folks came, um, and, and they did absolutely. There were, there were issues. We, we fully acknowledge that. Um, it is not something that we ever wanted. Um, and we serve, we certainly don't want to burden the town with that. So that is one of the reasons why we are eager to help and make sure that that does not happen again.
Exactly what I was going to say as well. Thank you, Ryan. In 41 years, that has never happened. And I was very appreciative that the DPW did put signage, um, no parking along 58. We have no problem putting that on our website as well as saying, please follow signage. Because once we have signs, we have a parking plan and, and now actually down on paper for um, the chief and for the detailed officers and then our parking staff. So we know where we're going to go from point A to point B to point C. We know when the buses are going to be coming and scheduled. And we're going to have to add some additional signage that we've also talked about and then we'll continue to talk about so we get it exactly the way both the chief is happy with and that we're happy with so that there isn't confusion. But I also think by the fact that we are removing our dated tickets so that that can't happen again is another way we are taking precautions with this situation. Because in all honesty, the people it hurts the most are, is us. We, we don't want people coming and, and angry that they couldn't get in or that they had to park on 58 or, you know, we never want people to be angry. We are here, we're here to entertain people. And that's really what we want to continue to do. So it is on my list. We'll get that on the website without question. We can even say cars will be towed if they park on 58. That generally tends to scare people. So we will take care of this as well. And, and we are really hoping for a much smoother, um, transition if we have a few days that, that are, that are big or that are, you know, that people want to come.
No, and, and I, and I realize that things happened last year that may not have happened before, but I think it's incumbent upon all of us to, to learn from what happens and try to, and try to deal with those problems the, the way they're presented. And I guess uh, we talked, we talked about the, I had that question as well. How, how are we going to make people aware of the alternate lots? But I guess the last question I have, and then I'll turn it over to the board, is a, as, as you mentioned earlier, the fair is, is very much weather-based. And I appreciate the move to, to dated tickets. I really think that's going to help a great deal. But i- is there a plan? You know, if I have tickets for Saturday and it rains all day and, and the fair is not, how, how, how you, how do you deal with those Saturday tickets?
So our, our new ticketing company allows for the transfer of those tickets. Um, so they'll, it, they, the folks can only transfer to a date that is available. Um, so what, I'm, I'm not sure, um,
Okay. They can go back into the system somehow and exchange that Saturday ticket for another date? Basically, possibly, possibly. Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, questions from the board?
But it wouldn't be, I, I think what you're trying to say, correct me if I'm wrong, it, it wouldn't be for a date that, where all the tickets are already sold out.
Right.
Right.
Yes, that's, that's a possibility. Thank you.
Other questions from the, from the board?
Question. What capacity limit have you come up with? What's the maximum number of tickets that are going to be sold for any given day?
Um, well, I'm going to be honest with you guys. We're, we're a private business and we're not going to disclose our numbers to you. Um, we know how to do our business. We know how to run our business. We've been doing it for a very long time. And the two things that happened last season that caused all these problems, we are now taking care of. So that does not happen again. As you can see from everything we've been working with, with the traffic committee and the parking plans and the extra signage. And so all I can tell you is, and there's no exact number to be honest either. Some people come and they stay a couple of hours. Some come in the morning, they're gone by noon. Some come at two, they stay till six. We don't have a way of knowing, yes, this person's coming in this thing all day. You know, because our performance is going all day long. So people want to come. They want to see different acts, but if they've already seen one act, they might say, that's the whole, their kids, leave early. So it's, it's a difficult thing to, um, to put a number on. I mean, just like with Carver. We're not, you know, selling advance tickets to Carver people. They have to come when they come on that day and we let them in. So it's kind of not an exact number. Um, all I can tell you is based on what we think that we did in that crazy two-day period over Columbus Day weekend, we have dropped the amount of that by huge percentage so that that can happen. Ideally, what we'd like to do and what we are also trying to do is we have taken tickets to make it, um, the ticket price different in September versus tickets in October because October is when everyone wants to come. And it's cool and it's beautiful out. And so people coming in October are going to have to pay a little bit more money if they want to come. So you're going to get those people that probably want to come in October, but they don't want to spend the money, so they're going to come in September. Again, we have no idea how this is going to work. We're just hopeful. We've also switched around our theme weekends. Some of our big theme weekends happen in October. Well, now we're trying to put some in September so that, again, we switch the crowds so that, God willing, what we do is even it out more of an even flow throughout the 18 days that we're lucky to be open for 18 days this year.
So then how do you know when to mark a date sold out?
Because I set a limit on our online tickets.
Right, which is what? Because dated tickets are great and it's nice to know how many people are coming in advance, but if you can buy as many dated tickets as you want, that's not going to help the situation. If you're getting all those people who want to come on a good day because they couldn't come the other day and they can all buy tickets, that doesn't solve anything.
Yeah, I'll buy tickets because there's a limit to them. The tickets are done. So, you know, that's, you know, so we'll have to choose a different date, just like if you're going to a concert or a movie or anything like that.
Right, but if I'm going to.
Ame, I think that, I think that we could, um, answer this with, uh, in, in our final weekend last year, um, that was going into that, something that had come up, obviously, both from, um, concerns from the chief, um, and from neighbors that had called into us. And um, Ame, you implemented something for the last weekend that those problems didn't happen. So I think she's basing it off of that as far as I know. Um, and that final weekend worked smoothly and there were not traffic issues.
Traffic issues, we didn't even have to fill out all our parking lots.
If I could add too, now the, the fair has management tools that were never available in prior years. Between the dated tickets, monitoring that, the ability to shift those sales to other days to control rain dates, I think the management tools are going to be very effective.
Right. Just without us knowing numbers, it's not very reassuring. And you had mentioned going to concerts and movies. When I go to a concert, I know the venue capacity. When I go to a movie, I know how many people can sit in the theater. It would be nice for our police department and other town agencies to know how many people to expect that day.
No, I understand, but I, I don't know, and I understand you, the comparisons aren't similar though. Because it, movie theaters or concerts, you have a fixed number of seats and you have people that are. and you have people that are going to attend for a fixed time.
Right.
Here, it's a big parcel of land. People come and go. Some stay for a couple of hours, like Amae was saying. Some stay all day. Sort of, to try to pinpoint a number, I think is impossible. I think what they're relying upon is 41 years of experience, and now additional management tools on top of that. I don't foresee the same confluence of factors that occurred last year. Now they have the ability to manage all of those factors.
Well, the only reason I said movies and concerts is because she did.
Okay, no, I, I understand.
Yeah, exactly. We don't have, we don't have a number of seats. We're a big parcel of land. And as we all know, there is no statute or law for how many people you can have in an outdoor event. So what we're doing is making sure that we have enough parking, and we have auxiliary parking, a good plan in place, and the chief is aware. And we're all working together to make this so that it's a wonderful experience for everyone in the town and the people that come to visit the show.
Okay, without a hard, fast limit, I'm not convinced. And I see at least one of butters in the audience who I bet would like more information, too.
Yep. And if I could just tag along with what Ms. Bogart had to say, do we have a number on how many cars can fit into the, the parking lots at King Richard's Fair? Do we know what that number is?
So...
Well, sorry, go ahead.
So that number would vary, again, depending upon weather. That land does different things. Sometimes there are large puddles that can't, you know, you can't park in, things like that. And depending upon the vehicles that come, it also changes the number that can be there.
Well, I guess this is what I'm getting at. And Chief, I'll, you, you, you bring in additional detail officers, depending on how many people you anticipate being at the fair. Is that correct?
So, no, we have a standard number of officers right now. We, we needed to last year when we had these large, larger crowds, but we weren't, we weren't able to get anybody.
So, so if, if, if we had a, a date next year, let's say where the, the fair had a large number of people purchasing tickets, they anticipated the, the fair parking lots being full and having to use auxiliary parking, would you anticipate having to bring in more officers?
So that's a possibility, depending on the plan. We're still working that part of this out, where we're, how we're going to set up the auxiliary parking lot. But that's a possibility. We're, we're not, we haven't made that decision yet.
Okay. So I guess that, that, that was my, my question is, is there a plan in place to keep our public safety officials aware on an ongoing basis, hey, it looks like on this day, we're going to have a large crowd. You, you need to be aware of that, or, so we can, we can be prepared.
And I believe that, based on discussions that we've had, that relationship that, as Amae's mentioned before, and Ryan's mentioned before, is, is there, has been there for a while. But I think everybody in the room is very aware that that relationship has to improve, and, and we have to be on top of that, because we have to make real-time decisions before these problems happen, rather than waiting till they don't, till they have happened. We, we mentioned, Ryan mentioned before that the fair's had plans in place, and they've been here for 41 years, and they've had some plans in place, but they weren't in place well enough that we could react and make them work. And I believe that's the message that we're taking from this, that we need good quality plans in place, and we need good quality trigger points as to when to activate those plans. And I believe that that's what we've accomplished through this. I don't have a number, an exact number of how many cars. I mean, we've counted the cars that were in the parking lot based on the, on the, on the map that we can see from the satellite. But I think, more importantly, is that we have a plan to divert cars somewhere else when that, when that problem happens. Because the problem happens when we get those three parking lots full, and we have no place to direct the cars to. And whether we agree there was a plan in place before or not, there is a much better plan and much more interactive plan in place today, so that we can work together to make real-time decisions about when to make those decisions to switch. Because that's, for me, the key point, is not that the, the parking lot's filled up, is what are we going to do with the remainder of the people in Route 58 when that happens? Because we can't plug 58 up. I believe that in our discussions over the past few months, everybody as well understands that very well, and is prepared to make that happen this year. And I don't think that we will have the same issues that we did, based on the plans we have. Well, I, I appreciate your enthusiasm, Amae, and I support that. I'm going to hedge my bets and say that I think that we won't have those problems, and that we, and that if problems arise, we're going to work through them. But I think part of this is going to be, we're not able to see the results until we put it into place again.
Is the plan to have auxiliary parking in place every date the fair is open, or is the plan to have auxiliary parking in place after you reach a certain amount of tickets sold?
No, we won't. We have the auxiliary plans in place for any day of the fair season. And as we get closer to each weekend, I could even have a discussion with Chief of Philly on the Friday before. I mean, not everyone buys their tickets till Saturday, or if they're coming on a Sunday, and we have a more updated idea. But we will, I mean, this year alone, we were in constant communication. Probably more than Chief of Philly ever wanted to do, but I think that we have great plans in place, again, that were never in place before, or as detailed in place. We didn't have signage like we needed before, and we didn't have buses readily available to us, which is a whole different planning thing we're doing with the superintendents and the Carver School buses. So it is going to flow and work so much better, that I'm very excited about it, seeing how it plays out.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, Jen, you may have had other questions.
No, no.
I mean to steal your...
That's it.
If I could just add, I don't want to minimize the, the question that Ms. Bogart asked about the number. But I do want to say that even without a hard number, I believe that having these plans in place, and having a, a, a better understanding that Amae and I have to communicate on the Friday before, and be together on, understanding what's coming, so that we can plan for that. I think everybody understands that now. I think that nobody wants to see that repeated. And I, and I am very hopeful that that, having that, that change will make a big difference in how we respond and how we handle it next year. Thank you.
We also want to, again, say thank you for taking on some of that burden last year, quite a, a great deal of that burden, you and your, and your team, your officers. So thank you very much for helping us through that.
Thank you. We have a good team, and, and everybody worked together to get that done. And that's our job. That's what we do. And we'll continue to do that. I think that we've put a lot of effort into, on both sides of this, so come on in with a better way of handling that this year. Because I doubt we're going to have less. You know, I think we're going to have 18 good days, and everything's going to be wonderful, and we're going to have no problems. But you never know.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah.
Anyone? Mr. Carter?
I guess I never realized this 18-day scenario. I, maybe I should know, but I don't. Is that a hard limit? So if you had two rain days, you couldn't do 20 days? Or is that something you have to get board authorization, or is just scheduling your acts and your, and your vendors and your employees?
It is a...
The 18 days is a hard 18 days. You know, we had one year where we rained out the first four weekends. And that probably could have put us out of business, only being open the last four weekends in October. We had enough crowds that, that you were able to, you know, basically break even. But no, all our performers, our artists, and everyone has a different schedule. So they know that after those 18 days, there's, they're done.
Okay. And, and you'd mentioned, not that we want to go this route, but, you know, yeah, it was crazy on 58. You couldn't move. And someone, I think you mentioned threats of towing. There's one thing to have the threat of towing, but do we contract out? Or have we, would we contract out with a towing company? That, should there be, nothing stops someone from parking if they see a car getting towed. So do we have that ability, or is that just a threat?
Yes, indeed.
I guess, might be, sorry, the chief too fully, sorry.
Well, if one or two cars park, certainly it's a threat that we can carry out. If it happens the way it happened the other, this year, no. There's no way to, we couldn't catch up. I was in the road, trying to convince people not to park in those spaces. And as soon as I moved away and lost it, it was done. So, I don't want to talk about it in a public meeting, but it's a good threat with a, with a couple of cars, but it's not a threat I could carry out. I don't, we don't have the tow trucks, or the police officers to do that if they park all up 58. But we're hopeful that that won't happen with the signage. And with, that happened because we had no place to put the cars, right? But this time, we're going to have a place to put the cars. We're going to have signs at the, at the entrances saying, continue on up to the traffic light, take a left, take a right, and go to the parking lot. We hope that that will change that. Because the, the reason behind that happening was no place to send them, and people who'd driven here with tickets who wanted to find a place to park. So I, I think we can avoid that with the plan that we put in place, because it's going to give them somewhere to go. So if they follow directions, they'll go to a parking lot, get on a bus, and come back to the fair. So I'm hopeful that we won't have to worry about that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, too, Chief, but I do feel that once those do not park signs, or no parking signs were put up by the DPW, we didn't have one issue with that the next day.
Yes, that's correct. But I, again, I think, I, I think by giving them, giving your customers a place to go is, is the key to this. It's giving them some direction on where to go. And that can be accomplished with signs, and the availability of a parking lot to put them in, so.
And limiting the ticket sales. So that's what we've done, and we're hoping it works.
And maybe I missed this, but how many, whoever can answer this question, how many lots do we have available, these extra capacity lots? Are they all, they've already been assigned? We know where they are? I know we talked about them in the high school. Are there others?
I'll let, Amae speak to that.
Yep, we have, we generally go from our lots to Savory Ave. We know about how many cars we can park there. And then we go to the, I think it's Carver Square, right, you know, next to, like, the Rockland Trust, right in there. We work with the, the person that owns that lot. And then we would be using as a last location if needed, the Carver Middle School, high school.
Have you reached out to Edoville?
We have not. We most likely probably would be using Edoville. But at that point, once we're getting those lots taken care of, plus all our lots, that's kind of about the attendance that we wouldn't want to see on a busy day. And last year, that one issue that Edoville had, that they didn't offer, which we thought they had, were actual parking spots that people could pull into themselves. And so, we didn't have, we didn't realize that they didn't have actual parking spots. And it just kind of became a free-for-all down there. And so, we think right now, we should be good with what we have.
Okay, I guess my last question has to do, I guess it's for King Richard's Fair, the, uh, did you have a problem? I heard stories about just long lines inside, getting drinks and food and things like that. Was there a hiring issue last year that caused some of these problems? And it might, if there is, it might be a situation out of your control. But number one, was there? And number two, do you have a plan to, I guess, change it?
Ryan, you want me to?
Well, I, I think, as with so many businesses, hiring became more difficult. Certainly, we had, we could, we could always use more staff, for sure. So, yes, there were lines. I, I think there's going to be lines in, in any spot that you might go to. Were they lines that, that were a little bit longer? Sure. Again, it was a crowd that was also unexpected. Beyond that, most folks left happy and full and, and good.
And again, we were talking about just two days, you guys, that, that this happened, and that these, these crowds were there, and that the lines, the lines were long. They were lines that we never want any of our patrons to have to, to wait in. And so that's another reason that we're really happy about the, the plans that we have in place, and the ticketing that we have in place. And I think it'll be a much better situation for everyone involved.
And we've also begun to hire earlier this year as well. Our hiring information is up on our website now as well. Folks at home, www.kingrichardsfair.net. So folks can start applying now for positions as well. So folks in Carver, bros.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one last thing. I know that it said it was only two days, but it's 18 days. And I just think back to when there were more butters here, and there was a woman and came and spoke to us and told us that she didn't feel that it was safe for her children to play in their own driveway. So I don't care if that happens on 18 days. That can't happen for one day. So don't minimize the problems.
I, I don't think anybody is, I don't, sure, Amae, sorry.
No, no, we, we are not minimizing it. That is not something we want for anybody. And as a parent myself, I wouldn't want that to happen. That exact situation happened on that Sunday of Columbus Day weekend, with the same day that we had the huge crowds and people parking on 58 and everything. It was that same situation. And I did talk to that resident, and, you know, we apologized. We felt horrible that that happened. I was leaving control of that, someone parking there and doing that. But I understood that we never want that to happen to anybody. So with all these, these new tools in place and plans in place, I, I feel very comfortable with that. It never happens again.
Okay.
Well, I think the key to that, and we all agree that that situation that happened on Route 58 can't, can't ever happen again. But I think between the signage we've talked about, and, and getting some kind of prominent notice on the website, and however else, maybe there's other ideas that we can come up with. But we, we need to make it clear to people, because I, I, I had people reach out to me that, they're not local people, they're coming from Nashua, New Hampshire, and Maine, and Rhode Island. They're coming from all over the place to go to the fair. And, and they're unfamiliar with, with Carver. They don't, all they know is they have a, you know, a couple of adults and three or four kids in the car. And they drove two hours to get to the fair, and the parking lot may be full, but they're going to go to the fair. And we have to make it clear to them that there's auxiliary parking available, if, if the fair lot is full, but they, they can't park on Route 58. They can't be parking in people's driveways. They can't park on Route 58. They need to find some of this auxiliary parking. And we need to make that prominent in whatever way we can do it. Because they can't, they can't, just can't be parking and, and walking up and down Route 58. And that, that just can't happen.
And, and again, thank you. We feel very confident that with these dated tickets, and the limit on the tickets per day, and the parking plan in place, and the auxiliary parking plans in place, and the bussing, that, that situation with that overcrowding won't happen.
Thank you. Okay. Chief, do you have anything to add?
No, just thank you for everybody working on this. I, I think we've all recognized how important it is. I know I do, because I was in the 58 when it was going on. And we don't want it to happen again. And I hope, and I am confident that working together, we can make that happen. I think that everybody involved recognizes that making sure it doesn't happen again is important, you know? And I think we've done that. So, thank you for everybody's support, and thank you for all the hard work. And so, there's still some more work to go. And I anticipate the fair will continue to work with us on that, so we can have a better plan in place for next year.
Right. Any, anything else from members of the board? If nobody has an issue, we do have a couple of butters here that I know have been at every meeting we've had on the fair. Any issues, if I ask them if they have anything I'd like to add? Mr. Moore, Ms. Churchill, anything?
Come, come use the microphone.
Come up to the microphone. Folks, they can use, that one right there is available, so they can...
This one right here?
That, right, right over there. Thank you.
I have a question, because last year, packing was set, packers were sent to Edoville, and there was buses there to bring them up to the fair.
Pull the microphone.
In theory, that would work very well. But in application, it totally failed. All the people did not want to wait for the shuttles, so they marched up Route 58, past my house, past everyone's house, 500 people, women pushing baby carriages. Everyone I know on South Main Street was terrified for those children. You can't make people go to the additional parking. You can't make them get on a shuttle. How can you prevent that from happening again?
Do you want to take it? But, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, ma'am.
I'm Sharon Churchill, 41 South Main Street.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. That, that specific topic's one of the topics that we discussed with the chief. And last year, I think, again, there were a number of factors that came together. The weather and, and, and things like that. And...
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sure. The, the number of buses were not adequate at that time. We've got a much different plan this year with phased parking. So we've got satellite lots. So that should be prevented. Again, I, it was, it was terrible. I understand that. But there were buses that weren't at the right place at the right time, as I understand it. This year should be different.
And at a time, last year, it was a two-hour wait, and people weren't willing to wait. What is the time gap now between being sent there and being shuttled up to the park?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know of a two-hour wait, but...
Yeah, thanks, you guys. I didn't hear anything about a two-hour wait. I think that people and rumors exaggerate the situation. Again, we had anticipated having the amount of people that came on that Sunday of Columbus Day, which is the day that we're all talking about with the, the parking on the street, the baby carriages in the middle of the site, people not wanting to wait. In all the years that we've been doing this, I think the most buses we ever had to shuttle, we had three. And we ended up having three that day. But people, there were more people, and they didn't want to wait. And God knows why they wanted to walk three miles, but they did. It was unprecedented, unheard of. I can't imagine that ever happening again with what we have in place now.
But it wasn't just that one day, because over the last few years, everyone in town will tell you, we have watched the traffic get worse and worse and worse. I live right at, right there on 58. We cannot get out of our driveway. It isn't just that... It isn't just that, that one day, there were a lot of people. There are a lot of people. Every weekend, the fair is open now. I don't know if you've become more popular, more successful. That's wonderful for you, but it's not good for us. We can't even get in and out of our house. I have sat at the end of my driveway for over an hour trying to get out. This is ridiculous. That's, and that's not a public safety problem. That's a major inconvenience to all the landowners, homeowners along the route. And you all know, and you had, you know, you know what it's like. It's horrible.
I understand that. I would be aggravated too. I think that any of the traffic that we have done and all the cones and all the signage and everything that we have helped to alleviate that. Again, the days that you're talking about, it really wasn't every day, because there were many days in fact, the first four weekends of the fair, we didn't even fill our, our lots. So, you know, we keep an eye on what's happening. And we want the dozens in Carver to be happy, to want us here. Again, we've been here for 41 years. We've been here a lot longer than some people in Carver have been. And we want to stay in Carver. And we are really working hard with the committee that we're working with, so that a lot of these problems don't happen again. And I think you and I even spoke.
We did, yeah, we did. I have one question though, for the, the board. If these measures fail, and we wind up in another crisis situation this fall, is there a strategy in place to shut it all down, to stop this? So that we don't have another day like last fall?
Well, I think that's something we have to discuss with, with our public safety officials and, and talk about at that time. So I think that's, that's where we're at.
That's a real concern, because it sounds good right now.
And that's, that's why we're holding these meetings. That's why we're continuing to hold these meetings. And that's where we're at, trying to work together to solve these problems.
So, and I think, Ms. Churchill, obviously, you had come to the fair site. We had spoke there. I put you in contact with Amy, so that you could also speak with her during that time. And then, as, as far as I recall, in the meeting that we first discussed, well, not myself, but that it came back to the board in terms of things, you, you actually spoke up and said that the final weekend went very smoothly and that there were not issues. And that was due to Amy working diligently with the chief to make sure that those issues didn't happen. And now on top of that, we've gone many steps further to ensure that that is the case all the way through.
I hear you, Ryan, and I understand that, and I appreciate all the effort going into it. But we are, still are concerned that this may not work. Where last year, you did have a traffic plan in place, it did not work to solve that terrible problem. And we want to know that there is a contingency plan in case these things don't work, because we don't want to go through that again.
We're going, we're going to continue to work on this, Ms. Churchill.
Okay.
It's a priority of the board. And I think you, I think you know.
And certainly, it's a priority for the fair. So, and thank you, honestly. It, it, it's very helpful to get the feedback in order to make sure that, that our, our friends and neighbors are happy. It is something that is important to us as well.
You're here to do business those weekends. We live here all year. We have a real big interest in things working.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. Mr. Moore?
Hi, Savory Moore, 12 South Main Street. I'm even closer than Ms. Churchill. I can see your driveway from my, the end of my driveway. And you may, you may have had four weekends in September when your lot wasn't full, but 58 was full. And I can attest to that by all my neighbors who sold parking spaces on their front lawns, because people didn't want to wait. People made a fortune parking cars that were stuck on 58. And it started the first weekend in September. So obviously, this is a problem. I am a captive in my house for four weekends in September. I cannot leave my, I can leave my house, I can't get back home from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. on eight consecutive Saturdays and Sundays. And that's a problem. It's a big problem for me. Anyway, hopefully, what you're doing will be, will alleviate this problem. I know that you're doing all of your ticket sales through online sales now. So you will have an email address or a text number, I assume, for every patron that's coming that particular day. Is that correct?
You should. Correct.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So as soon as the, as soon as the parking lot, your main parking lot, is at, let's say, 90% capacity, can you send out a blast email to everybody who has a ticket for that day, saying, if you have not arrived here yet, please go to this auxiliary parking lot? So that there's not a bottleneck at your main entrance?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think that.
When you're operating a business and you're trying to get the cars going in the flow, you don't always have the time to stop and say, well, this one is, this one is going to be open, because by the time they get there back on my area, it'll be full, and it may go to another auxiliary lot. So with signage, the new signage and the added signage, and the directions and police detail and everything that we're working on and paying for to have it be flowable, we are, we are hoping that that will be an issue.
And Amy, just coupling with that, that was one of the reasons why she, why she and Bonnie chose our new ticketing company. For if, and if that came to it, that is something that was possible.
Right. But if every, after your parking lot is full, if every car has to stop at the end of the lot and ask where to go, even with signage, it's going to be a problem again. So if they could know on their.
Savory will be stopping, because the lots will be closed in the detail, and everyone will be directing people to where they need to go.
Can you promise me they won't be stopping?
I'll do my best to promise you they won't be stopping, but that's what we're aiming to do.
Okay. I'm, I'm dubious.
Hold on, just, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we should promise anybody there's going to be no stop traffic. There's still going to be traffic. We're bringing a bunch of cars into Carver every day. There's still going to be traffic. We're not going to change that. We're going to get the traffic as off the road as efficiently as we can, which we did last year. We got the cars into that parking lot a lot more efficiently than ever before, filling two parking lots at the same time. And having a good trigger point in mind as to when those lots are going to be full and starting the switching process sooner, I think will make the difference in not letting the traffic back up and become a problem like it was. But there's still going to be traffic. We're, we're not eliminating cars. There's still going to be cars coming to, coming to town.
I understand.
But I think, but having these, having mechanisms in place, and I'm, I'm not saying you're right. You're right, it's a pretty good idea if they have an email and redirecting them that way. But having signage and having a plan in place with a predetermined spot in the parking lot being full to, to trigger that, to say, okay, now we're switching over to Savory, or now we're switching to the other parking lots. When we're more efficient at that, we won't have that, we won't have that problem. The problem we had, from my standpoint, and my standpoint was standing in 58, was that once those parking lots get full, not making that decision or not having a place to send those cars quick enough. Now that we have a place to send the cars and a process in place in real time to make that decision, I think that that's going to be key to us getting, continuing the flow of traffic. Because once those lots are full, I just got to continue to flow traffic up 58 to the yellow blinking light, take a right until I get to high school and they can park there. That'll keep traffic flowing this time, I think, a lot better.
Right. But I, I understand that. And, you know, I, I know there's going to be traffic. But I'm thinking with today's technology and everybody using Waze or Google Maps to get around traffic, if they were given an alert on their way, that they're, they're going to have to park somewhere else, they plug that into their phone, and now they have different directions.
I, I don't disagree with you. I'm not saying that's a bad idea. I'm just saying that I just wanted to touch base that we're not, we're not going to not have traffic. There's still definitely going to be traffic. And we used Waze last year. We have the ability from the police station to shut off roads, to put roads on. And that works to an extent, but it doesn't work perfectly. There's people who just go around it anyway. So it's, it's good. Technology works very well in some instances. And I think that's not a bad idea that you bring up, Mr. Moore. But I think that we have to use all these ideas to make it work. And, and I believe that we have much better plans in place going forward than we did last year.
Okay, great.
But again, it's just still going to, there's still be traffic up there. We're going to need the cones. We're going to need police officers. There's going to be cars. And I think knowing when to switch is the big decision and a big key factor in this. And being able to switch to another lot will make a difference.
Well, if I'm going to be, have to be a captive, I'd rather be one hour than four.
We'll, we'll do everything we can to get you to know.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add to this discussion? Nope, you're good. All right. Could I, could I ask you folks to, to circle May 2nd on your calendar? We'll plan on a follow-up meeting on May 2nd? That's good for everybody, the first meeting in May? All right. Anyone have anything to add before we move on? All right.
Amy.
Oh, we're not hearing you. Hang on a second. We can't, we can't hear you.
Amy, do you have your thing on mute?
We still can't hear you.
Sorry.
Oh, there you are.
In regards to, we also have our assistant on site, and she's very good at communicating and knowing when we need to post something, whether it's on our website or on, on social media, saying, hey, we can say that. Lots are full, please, you know, follow directions to the auxiliary lot. So that is something we can do in regards to that.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we'll, we'll plan on another meeting on, on May 2nd. And I really appreciate all the hard work that everyone is putting together to, to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. All right. All right. So moving along, we have the minutes of February 21st, 23. Ms. Hewens, did you have a chance to review those?
I did. There was just one, there was one quick thing. I'm sorry. I think it's on page, yeah, on page four. I said, it's page four? Yep. Page four, under the Article 12 Solar Pilot Agreements. Down towards the end of that section where it says Hewens stated. I'm not sure that that's actually what I said. I, I think what I said was that there may be some legal issues involved here that can't, makes us unable to discuss some of this. How's that for vague?
Yes, I, I, I recall that conversation.
But if it's legal, then we really can't discuss it.
I believe that's, that's accurate.
So.
Would you like to make a motion to approve with that correction?
Yes, I move, we approve the minutes of, with that correction.
All right. Is there a, is there a second?
Minutes of February 21st.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor? Aye opposed. It is unanimous. Let's see. Select Board announcements. Mr. Carter?
What's happening?
Ms. Bogart?
No.
Ms. Hewens?
I just want everyone to keep Shane Gibbs Thanks Food Pantry in mind now and always.
All right. Thank you. And again, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, I'll just offer my and my, and the town's condolences to our colleague Jim Hoppen and his family. All right. Our next meeting will be March 21st. I know we mentioned at the last select board meeting that there might be a need for an additional one. I don't think we're going to need that additional meeting at this point. If, like, we have to discussion with the town administrator, I don't think so. Do you, Bob?
No.
All right. So our next meeting will be March 21st. And at this point, we'll be in a brief recess, and we'll reconvene in a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. We are back in session. And Mr. Jermaine, I'll turn it over to you to call your board in.
Good evening. This is the 7th of March. This is 7:25. This is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Select Board to go over the budget for inclusion in the town warrant.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Fantasy, would you like to start us off?
I will start off with the discussion, quick discussion about the budget for the people out there. Everybody here knows. The way the budget's drafted, the, the town department submit to the town administrator their request for the budget for the following year. And they were told that we're holding to a level services budget with, with some caveats on some departments that may need additional personnel or additional monies for, say, equipment that the prices have gone sky high, fuel and et cetera. But once those come in, obviously, the number's much bigger than what we would expect at the end. And then becomes a process of, of meeting with the department heads, whittling it down over time, getting it to the meeting that the Select Board and Finance Committee had and Capitol had in January, that, that full day on that Saturday. And then following that with, with meetings by the FinCom, going through the budgets with the, the major departments that, that had some potential cuts in it. So all of that said, we finally came down to a balanced budget that's being presented tonight. The FinCom will present it along with me to the board for the board's approval of that. So, so that's where we're at. And that's how we got there. And it was, it's like, it's like making sausage. You don't want to see it, but the end, it tastes good. So, so we're at the end now, where it's.
I'm not sure about the taste good yet.
All right. Do you want to start us off with the discussion of bonding for the library and Town Hall?
Well, that's a good idea. So that's really a two-part. So you're going to bring in the second part of that also?
What, what part?
Well, there's a two-part. There's, there's going to be a part A with the bonding, and then a part B, which is going to be the benefits of the bonding. So we're going to, we're going to go on with that, then we, we should.
I'll have that. You have it with you. So, so the idea and the discussion revolves around bonding the, the library. I'm sorry, not the library. The library's already bonded. Bonding the Town Hall siding with the library roof, and that's something new. Because according to David, needs to be done. And rather than keep kicking these things down the road, is go to one bonding for that, along with the library painting. So looking at those, once that's bonded out, that would relieve a number of items and monies to go back into the capital plan and, and get some of those things done this year.
Is there a number?
Well, the number is, oh, that's the 900,000.
If I may?
I think she's bringing it along.
Mr. Jermaine?
Let me give you just a little bit of background. And I think that, and Bob's doing a good job there. Don't misunderstand. We've got $960,000 set aside for the HVAC. We've got $660,000-ish set aside for the Town Hall siding. The concept at the joint meeting was to bond these two projects and put all this money we've set aside back into capital to keep the capital plan on its 10-year forecast. Because we keep kicking this can down the road, and that's going to come back and hurt us. So when I spoke with Dave Seidenthoff, he said, next year on the capital plan, on the forecast, is the roof to the library. So he said, if we're going to do that, then, you know, would you consider doing the roof and including that? And then we talked again, and he said, take a look out the window. What do you think about getting the painting done? So I said, you know what? And I think I made the statement at the joint meeting, I think that, that John agreed with me. Let's just get both buildings done, completed. The library, done. Town Hall, done. We can do the short-term borrowing, when the whole project's completed, turn it into a bond if we need to. The rates are only 4%. Now, it's not bad. We can take the money we've set aside for the painting, Town Hall siding, and the HVAC, and roll that right back into the capital plan, and we'll keep the entire capital forecast on the track that it's on. And the biggest reason for that is, and we heard, heard from Chief Weston last night, as well as John Woods, the previous Thursday, that anything they order now out of capital, any vehicle that gets ordered, we're not going to see it between 12 to 18, maybe 24 months. So that in effect takes a 10-year capital plan. If you know two years from now, we need a new pickup truck, we now know, we have to move that pickup truck almost up. Because by the time that truck comes in, it's two more years before we see it. We waited 15 months for a bucket truck. So this was, this is how this entire conversation got rolling. And it, and it comes on the heels of a capital plan that, that started out at $900,000. And there was a whole lot of not this year's in, in the conversations. So this is what, this is what predated all of this. So this is where we're at right now.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything to add, Mr. Fantasy?
You should have a, this document, did you send that out?
Yes.
Everybody? Okay. So if you look at the first page, first page is 900,000 for the Town Hall, 15 years with equal declining debt services. And if you look at the, the schedule, the first, it's, it's kind of front-loaded with payments. First year is no payment. Then it's 36,000, 33 and change, 31 and change, 28 and change. It goes down. And the total for that $900,000 bond would be 1.188 million. Well, that's, that's a recommendation on the Town Hall siding. The, if you flip the page to. The, if you flip the page to the orange, did you get the highlights? Yeah. Well, the orange highlights. So for the library roof, again, if you look at the first one, it's a 15-year, that's, that, that's the, uh, the best case scenario uh, in terms of what we'll end up paying over the life of the bond. So that would be for a 1500, a 1.5 million dollar library roof, et cetera, would be, we'd end up paying 1.980. So almost $2 million for that 1.5 million. The others, if you look beyond that, if it's a 20-year, uh, we'd, we'd end up paying 2.169 million. And on the backside, if it's a 25-year, it's 2,377,500. So, so my recommendation would be the, the first page of each one of those to go out to bond. And the rates are still pretty good. Um, yeah, you want to add something? Okay, the rates? Yeah, okay. So, so said the nuts set in stone, these are the rates, um, as you got them, right? So.
All right. In my agenda, there's no article attached to this. Is there an article for this?
Do we, outside?
So we were talking about it yesterday that there's, if we put the article on where the capital is and we have, we're gonna have to have two different scenarios. One is if town meeting votes to go to borrow, then we can go ahead and, and assign more capital to the town. And if they don't, then we need to keep the money that's already in there to fund these projects. So there's, and we're supposed to talk to town council, get the wording to make sure that we're putting it in order properly.
And it would actually eliminate the roof. If they don't approve the bonding, then the roof at the library won't happen. The paint job won't happen. And we'll be, you know, putting money away to try to cover that capital project as well as kicking, um, the capital plan for this year, eliminating probably the better part of two-thirds of that capital plan, um, in bare bones.
So.
Right. There is, there is a need for two, there is a need for Plan A and Plan B.
So, Mr. Fantasy, will we have wording by our next meeting on an article?
Yeah, and, you know, yeah.
So we can, we can discuss it tonight.
For the.
We can discuss it tonight, but, but vote before, at the next meeting, once we get the wording for the article, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and just to, I think what we talked about was we done, we've done this in the past where you take your capital and you put it all as one big category and it gets voted as one, or breaking it down into sections. And that was the whole idea. You know, based on the worst-case scenario, we're gonna do this. If we, again, the numbers keep moving, so I think they're gonna stop soon. So we got, they have to. So then we're gonna take the next stage and then find out what can we do with merging capital and long-term debt.
And the capital outlay committee's gonna be meeting on Thursday to hopefully finalize both the scenarios and have a final number.
Now, am I correct that the capital plan does not have to be, is, voted on 30 days in advance? Only the operating budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we have time on the capital plan?
Yeah, that goes, that goes with the line on the, um, on the warrant, which is seven days before town meeting. Obviously, it'll be earlier than that because we need to print it out and so forth.
So we get the tough stuff done tonight and then we can work on, we, we need to approve the operating budget tonight.
Yeah.
And then capital and the bonding and so forth can, can come up seven days in advance.
Can I ask one thing to Beth? Um, so on the, on the article for changing the capital, um, the, the details on the capital plan, uh, for town meeting, did you finish that?
So we ended up not having a forum last week where we were supposed to finish it. Now we are gonna be finishing that on this Thursday.
Okay, good.
Yeah. And I, I told the committee it has to be this Thursday. I've already sent it out to everyone today to.
Yeah, I can't make it.
You get credit, John.
Yeah, we ended up not having a forum last week. That's what happened.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Okay. Other questions from the Select Board on the, the library and painting, town hall bonding? No? Anyone else have anything to add to that?
Uh, is it, do you want to?
Are, are we gonna also add the roof to the town hall on that as Alan was speaking? It, the, um, the library roof, actually the, the estimate came in lower, so that dollar amount for both buildings would probably be sufficient. So you could say that that's for the library roof and the town hall roof.
Yeah, I knew that number was wrong.
Yeah. I didn't have a number from Dave. He, he was getting an estimate.
That's fine. And I also talked with Dave. I really, we're very lucky. Um, and, and people get upset when I say that, but it's the truth. I sat down and I talked with Dave Seaton Tuff and, and he's very in tune with, with exactly where we are financially. And he's careful. So what started out as cement board and plastic trim, um, he made the cardinal mistake of saying, we're gonna do vinyl. And that got me to hang the phone up and drive to town hall. And we sat in the office and I said, vinyl? And he said, well, it's commercial vinyl. I says, please tell me it's like shingles or something like that instead of stripped vinyl that looks like stripped vinyl. He said, it is. And I said, why aren't we doing plastic trim? He said, well, plastic trim is three times the money as foot trim. I says, great. He says, so we're gonna do vinyl siding and paint the trim. I says, wonderful. Then we can start putting $25,000 a year away in an account, again, to paint the trim on town hall that'll never happen until it falls off. I said, this is ridiculous. If we're gonna bond this thing, why don't we just do it so that we can wash our hands of exterior maintenance on town hall for the next 20 years? And he said, I'll, I'll, I'll have them adjust that bid and see how much additional money that would be. I just don't think it's smart to penny pinch in some of these areas where it makes no sense to me. So he agrees, but he was concerned about the cost of the trim because the plastic trim, I, I just put it on my house. It is. It's three times the money.
Through the roof.
But you don't ever touch it again. We're done. So, you know, Tom Walsh says to me, he said, I gotta wear a heart out when I go into my, my, my door downstairs. I'm afraid I'm gonna hit the head by siding that's falling off. So we, we wanna get this done. Cement board is not the answer now. So it's, it's just outrageously expensive. Um, but the, the through color vinyl, it looks like a shingle. The stuff is, you don't even know it's not wooden till you walk up and touch it. So that's really nice. And I think the plastic trim gives us an exterior that aside from maybe washing the building every three or four years, there's no other maintenance. And it's do the roof, put the, put the tower back up and we all call it a day.
So, Mr. Fantasy, you'll have a, you'll have wording and the accurate numbers by our 321 meeting?
Yes.
For this that we can vote on? Okay. All right. So moving on to, uh, 1A, the supplemental appropriations.
So there are none.
There are none?
No.
So do you need a motion from the board to put that article on the?
Why don't, why don't we hold that, um, for the next meeting too, just if, if something surfaces?
All right.
But right now, there's nothing there.
All right. How about 1B, the unpaid bills?
None.
None?
I don't have a 1B.
All right.
I have a 1A.
How about number two, the allocation of funds from free cash?
So you may recall, the certified amount of free cash is 1.385,996. And of that, um, the replenishing of stabilization fund, bringing it up to the, uh, number of the, in the, um, financial guidelines, we have to put 138, 138,000 in that to bring it up. Uh, compensated absences, it's adding 25,000. And OPEB, 225,000. And the balance of that, 997,000, 996 goes to capital, the capital plan.
Okay.
So if you wanna move that.
All right. Is there a motion from the Select Board to place Article 2 on the warrant?
Motion to place Article 2 on the warrant?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It is unanimous. Thank you. Is there a motion from the Select Board to recommend Article 2?
Motion to recommend Article 2, allocation of funds for fiscal year 2023, free cash.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Anything on that? Anything to add, Mr. Fantasy?
No.
Ms. Moklin, anything? No? Mr. Mr. Jermaine?
We, the North Cabo Water District for well and infrastructure debt, that 231, 256. I was under the impression that that was gonna come out of the Betterment Fund. We, we, it wasn't gonna come out of.
So which one you, did you have?
Did we discuss this last night?
Yeah, is this the North Cabo Water?
Yeah.
So that's gonna come out of the North Cabo Water Stabilization, Debt Stabilization Fund.
Okay.
To pay that.
So it's not being transferred from free cash as it shows on Article 2?
Yeah, let me, the, the four, the four transfers I have in front of me, Mr. Fantasy, for Article 2 are, uh.
Been changed, yeah. So I had changed that today to, um, to take that out and have that, uh, funded through the debt stabilization fund.
So could, could you just read the accurate numbers? Is, is, so it's just, is it just B, C, and D?
Yes.
That, that we're doing?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so $138,000?
B, C, D, and then the, um, the free cash.
Okay, so what is the total?
I mean, the, um, the capital.
That's doing the totaling.
How much is in the debt stabilization fund?
I thought it was coming out of the Betterment account.
230, well, that's, I think you're talking about the same thing. The same account.
The, the Betterment account is there?
Not Cabo.
Stabilization fund?
North Cabo Water District Debt Stabilization Fund.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same, what, what we discussed last night.
So it's 388, 388 is the bottom liner.
388 exactly?
Yes.
Exactly.
All right.
This is coming out of.
And that is just comprised of item B, C, and D, correct?
Yes.
All right.
That's what we voted on last night.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the Select Board on this? Is there a motion to recommend, uh, Article 2?
I recommend Article 2.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It is unanimous. Thank you.
You should be made aware that the FinCom voted, um, I believe with 7-0 last night on this very same thing, on, on this portion.
All right. Thank you. All right. Number three, the operating budget.
So the operating budget, uh, you have it in front of you. The split between the, did you add this? So the split between, so the total, uh, budget is, oh, school budget is 22,005, 22 million. I wish it was thousand. 22,500,218 dollars. And the town share budget is 10,66874.
I've got 124.
Use, use this sheet.
I've got 124 on the stuff you sent me today.
Be very good.
On, on what I have in my computer screen right now says 10,000, 10,66124.
I'll see, I have 10,66874.
Yeah.
So this is 124. Is that that 750?
It's the capital outlay.
So there's an additional 750 on that, on the, the one that came out.
This says 124 also.
Yeah. So add 750s to that. Weren't you just talking about that?
Add 750,000, $1,700.
Dollar.
With that, did that drop out of heaven? Would we get that?
It's the capital line item. It didn't get picked up on the spreadsheet. I would just, given you the SRO report rather than continuing to change the spreadsheet back and forth.
Okay, so the accurate number is 10,660,874 dollars. Yes, correct. Okay, correct. All right. Mr. Fantasy?
That's the total.
Mr. Jermaine, did the, did the Finance Committee vote on this last night?
Say, I'm, I'm sorry.
The, the operating budget. Did the Finance Committee vote on it?
Yes. On the shared cost?
Yeah, yeah. On the, well, on the 10 million, very.
We didn't know about the 700.
Please voted on that last night.
You voted on school as well?
We did.
I think you did.
We took a vote on the school.
I think you did.
School came, but I don't think we took a vote on. Yes, we did vote on the 10,66874.
Okay. And was that a, what was the amount?
I think that was, they were all unanimous. There was only one vote that was not unanimous. So.
Okay.
They were all unanimous votes.
What was the vote?
7-0. Yeah, we had a full, full board last night.
Mr. Fantasy, do you have thoughts on this?
Uh, no, again, you know, we worked through this with the Finance Committee and got it down to, uh, balance out. And we're comfortable with that. Um, by moving the, uh, North Cabo Water District's debt into using the stabilization that gave us the chance to fill the gaps, um, that were changes made by the Finance Committee. Uh, for instance, it was $15,000 taken out of capital and put in the budget and a few other things like that. So, um, so we're, we're comfortable with that.
The changes that were made, we took, uh, it was actually, it was Capital's idea and rightly so. There was some, some items that were in capital that are recurring, that are annual, um, PPE gear for like the fire department and stuff for the police department. They should actually be in their operating budget, not in capital because it's an, it's an annual type of thing. So we've made those adjustments and, um, the only thing we didn't do, they were gonna raise the threshold in capital to $20,000, which would have eliminated, eliminated three items that were in the capital plan for O and M. Um, but because those, it was a, uh, two-post lift, a tire changer and a balancer. So obviously this would never be a, an annual expense. So that wouldn't go into their operating budget. So what they did was combine it and call it equipment. So that'll still cover for that. So that's the only changes I think were made, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Capital hasn't voted on these things yet. They'll be doing that on Thursday night.
The capital outlay committee's looking at the bylaw right now. We think it's a little outdated and we wanted to update it. And one of the updates would be to increase the threshold from 10,000 to 20,000. Just where the cost of everything is higher, maybe we should move up the capital.
Yeah, it seems like that would, that would make sense.
Yeah.
So the other thing that we talked a little bit, um, with Alan the last few days to, um, the union contracts have a 2% cost of living increase in them. On the, on the town side, um, and again, when I say the union contracts, all the schools, it's all the, all the, um, uh, police, fire, police, uh, not fire, but police, um, clerical, uh, DPW, they have the, the cost of living. Generally, the town has given between a 1 and 3% cost of living every year. This year, because we're starting out, I felt that we're at a kind of a critical needs, uh, time where, where we're looking to cut budgets. I had a zero, uh, slotted in. So since then, there's money there to, to approve a 1%, 2%, one and a half percent, a half percent or whatever, um, for the, for the non-union employees as a cost of living. The, the cost of that for 1% would be $31,000. And that's includes all non-union employees. If we went to a 2%, obviously it's double that. It's 60,349. The budget can carry either one of those. My recommendation would be doing a 1% cost of living because there's a built-in 2% in the steps.
I'm sorry, is that already in the budget numbers?
No, no. So this would be additional. So, so what would happen if the board votes this, uh, so we're looking at all the, all the departments and slot in that amount to the additional 1%.
So, so what is the total number with your recommended $31,000?
It's 30,17499.
Okay.
It's on the, it's on that sheet, the sheet, and it's in the green.
Okay.
And I think that, that blends to a high, higher morale too by giving, so that they're not feeling like, um, they're not, they're not staying equal to the union members. And the, and this doesn't make them equal. Again, unless you feel like you would want to do a 2% on top.
Sorry. So they, so if you do a 1%, they're getting a 3% increase?
Right, right. And, you know, the cost of living obviously went up a lot this year, a lot of people, so.
All right.
FinCom did not vote on this. This was a, an idea that we've been talking about and it wasn't ready to bring to FinCom last night. So if you wanna open discussion on that tonight, we certainly can. We were, uh, well, I personally was in support of the 1%. I'm not sure that I could wrap my head around a 2%.
No, I think the 1% is an excellent idea and I do think it, it's a good morale booster. And I, and I think it's, I think it's well-deserved. So I, I would be a supporter as well. Um, if you want to, uh, if your board wants to entertain. You want to, uh, if your board wants to entertain a vote, Mr. Jermaine?
Yeah, um, anybody comment?
Can I ask, ask a question?
Speak up, there's the things, there's the hovering things.
I just, I'm just wondering, um, because we didn't have us in the numbers last night, where are we going to pull the thirty thousand from?
So that's from the savings that we did by moving that North Cabo Water District money out, so that's how we funded all the other changes too.
Okay, that's all, I'm just wondering what line it, thank you.
We took fifty thousand dollars out of, um, project manager.
Project manager, they flopped them.
Out of that line and, and actually in, in the Selectments budget, so you, thank you very much for offering that to the town, so that the, um, this COLA increase can happen. We're up to twenty-five thousand.
We're always looking out for everyone.
I know, I saw that. So. Anybody else?
So that would be.
Pat? Walter? I'll take a motion from the FinCom for the one percent.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the select board the one percent COLA increase, um, totaling thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second, someone?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to, uh, offer a one percent COLA increase to non-union recommendation of the select board. Any further discussion from FinCom? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six, zero, alone.
All right, is there a motion from the select board to place Article Three on the, on the war?
So, uh, I.
Motion to place Article Three fiscal year twenty twenty-three operating budgets for town and enterprise funds, funding for OPED trust and stabilization funds.
I guess I'll second for purposes of discussion.
All right. This is just to place it on the war.
Oh, okay. Then fine.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, it is unanimous. Now, is there a motion to approve Article?
To recommend.
Recommend, sorry, Article Three, including the one percent, Mr. Fantasy referenced.
So moved.
A second for the purposes of discussion.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
So, so we're, so we're saying we're approving the operating budget, which again, by definition is both the shared costs, the, uh, town side as well as the school side. I've been to a lot of these meetings, but I've never, I, I, I don't know if there's been a school budget meeting with the FinCom, has there been?
So, so. They did, they came last night, but what we really got was an overview of their capital plan. We, we did not get into the nuts and bolts of the school budget. We have them for the last five years because we really can't do anything about it. That's town meeting, flow vote, and select boards, so.
Yeah, we really don't have any say on that. It's a bottom-line budget.
Can vote it.
Yeah.
Right.
But that's about it.
Yeah, I, I don't recall, Pete, when I was on the Finance Committee, that we really discussed the school department budget in any great detail.
That, well, that's because it's their budget, and, and they have a bottom-line budget that they don't have to itemize by state law.
That is correct.
Okay.
Do you have any other concerns?
Nope, that's about it.
You sure?
Oh, done with budgets.
All right. We, uh, we have a motion and a second to recommend Article Three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Uh, Article Four, the capital budget, so I, I don't see any numbers here. Are we not ready?
Not ready.
That's, that's something you're voting on on Thursday?
Thursday.
All right, so we'll.
Yeah, what about Part B?
Pass that?
Oh, yeah, so we have Part B also on that.
Well, there's, uh, capital has.
On part, on, on what?
Article Three, Part A, B.
Uh, okay, I don't have that on my agenda.
It's all part of Article Three.
Okay.
It's just broken into two parts.
So that first vote we took was just for Part A?
Right.
Okay.
The second part is the ambulance funds.
All right. Did the, uh, did the Finance Committee discuss Part B?
No, we did not. Well, actually, yes, we did. We did discuss the, the ambulance.
Because he was here.
The purchase, and yeah, Mike came in, and it was pretty much, it was all level-funded within his own department, so it was, you know, aside from a few minutes of talking about it, we had no issue with his budget because he's level-funded and he's self-funded.
Right.
And the only thing he was really talking to, uh, uh, FinCom about is he mentioned there was a thirty thousand dollar expense for a, uh, another car in the, in the capital plan that he was taking out, because that's going back in his own operating budget, so he didn't need anything from us other than, uh, have a nice day.
Yep, and the enterprise funds were obviously funded from receipts. Do you, do you normally take a vote to, uh?
We don't normally do that. That's just, that's their accounting.
All right, well, is there a motion from the select board to put Part B?
Happy to, but we don't usually.
I move that we approve Part B of Article Three.
You motioned that we put Part B on the?
Oh, on, rep, on the warrant, sorry, yes.
Yeah, this is where.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Is there a motion to recommend Part B?
I move that we recommend Part B of Article Three.
Second.
All right, motion and second, discussion? All right, all in favor of recommending Part B?
Do you like us to vote on Part B with this?
Aye.
Vote for, like, FinCom?
Well, hang on one second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Now, if you'd like to take a vote on Part B?
Anybody want to discuss it? You want to motion, make a motion? It's the enterprise account, so it really doesn't make, you know, it's a.
I'll make a motion to.
Makes town meeting warm and fuzzy because we're all in agreement.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the select board, um, Part B of the town warrant, sorry, for Articles.
Article.
Three. For the enterprise funds. In the ambulance fund, sorry.
Motion made and seconded to recommend Article Three, Part B to the select board. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six, zero.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, we're down to Article Eight, which is the Community Preservation Committee. Um, Mr. Jermaine, did your board?
We did have, we had no discussions, I don't believe, with commu, with CPC at all. Um, none, so. Certainly, um, yeah, we had nothing. We did no discussions with CPC. Other than the joint meeting that we, we both had, the five.
All right. What would the board, what's the board's pleasure on this? Would you like to invite someone from the CPC to come to our next meeting, or would you like to?
I think that would make sense.
Yeah, I, and, and I think we might have to have a FinCom meeting.
Ms. Yuen?
Well, I guess we typically do, but I mean, there are no proj, there's no project proposed, so this is basically just paying down the debt and then putting away the ten percent in each of the three categories that they.
What am I looking at?
Projects below.
Projects.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Sorry, I'm looking at five hundred and fifty-four thousand holes.
Right, and, and the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand is, is, um.
Project.
So down below.
That's debt, that's debt.
That's the debt.
Below is the project.
And the sixty-five thousand, one hundred dollars for open space, community housing, and historic is ten percent of, of their revenues that they're required to put away for each of those categories every year, so it's not really.
Part C is, well, Part D is that.
So Part B to F are the projects approved.
Yeah, there's a number of, number of items.
I did not see that.
I knew I saw one.
Now, I guess, I guess we should break this down into Part A, B, and C.
Yeah.
So is, is there a motion from the select board to put Part A? On the warrant?
Yes, I, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, is there a motion to put Part B on the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to put Part C on the warrant?
Move that we put Part C of Article Eight on the warrant.
Uh, I would like to hear from CPC. Does it need to, um,
Yeah.
Is that the point to do that, or?
This is just to put it on the warrant.
It's just to put it on the warrant.
Throw it on the warrant, I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Uh, is there a motion to put Part D on the warrant?
Motion to put Part D on the warrant.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion to put Part E on the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to put Part F on the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And am I of the understanding that we would like to hear from somebody on the, from the CPC on these projects?
Well, we, we pretty much know what's going on with Part C, um, because recreation came and we know about the pickleball court. Uh, and then that was talked about when Dave Seiden top, uh, when O and M came on too. In fact, that was at the, that Saturday joint meeting, they talked about that. Um, so unless the members of FinCom want to have, uh, discussion with, um, and we can schedule, certainly schedule a meeting because to, 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 the part that, the crunch time is now over. Um, we certainly can do a meeting in a couple of weeks and have CPC come in and, and run through the rest of these, if that's the desire of FinCom. It's up to y'all.
The, the other suggestion is to hear the argument at town meeting and then make a vote as a board.
There's a spot for a, a FinCom vote, and we don't, we, we haven't weighed in on it, but that's not something that, it's not to say that we couldn't do that, and we've done it in the past, we could do that at the meeting before town meeting also.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we want to be making votes to recommend or not recommend at town meeting.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah, I'd prefer to have that done before town meeting starts.
Just saying, in case you can't, can't get them in here, but you can try.
Yeah.
That would be, I, I think that would be my desire, to be honest with you.
Sure.
There's, you know, there's a lot of money here.
That, there is. Mr. Clutter, is that your desire as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, Ms. Yuen?
I'm, I'm fine either way.
Yeah. Mr. Mr. Fantasy, why don't you invite them to our next meeting? Okay? Thank you. We will.
Did you let them know that we'll be calling too? Please vote.
Yep. All right, and finally, we have.
We can just watch our meeting.
That hasn't been approved.
We have Article Thirteen, the Finance Committee Bylaw Amendment. Uh, Mr. Jermaine, would you like to speak to this?
I would. Well, actually, Pat's here tonight, uh, and, and I said before that I'm not the author of this. This was, um, something, we've been trying to work this out for a couple of years, and everybody knows it. Um, so Ron and Pat were kind enough to take this on, and they did their homework and so forth, so let me, let Pat, um. You sure? Okay. So, we all know where this has come from, so what we tried to do was make it so we didn't have to hire a Philadelphia lawyer to read the Fin, FinCom bylaw, because it's very convoluted. It's, it's a catch twenty-two. It was, there were stipends were given to us in two thousand sixteen. That was never taken off. The current bylaws to this day say that we shall serve without pay. Somehow council on aging got tied into the thing. Um, it, it, it refers to FinCom members as officers of the town, and yet it goes on to say that if you're an officer of the town, you can't serve on FinCom. So it's, it's, it's kind of a weird way it all works, so we sat down, tried to find a way to make this work, and, um.
Actually, could I interrupt?
Sure.
I think it said if you're an officer of the town, you can't serve on FinCom and on something else. It didn't say you couldn't serve on FinCom.
No, it, 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 that's, it, it was, that was the interpretation, because they used the word officer, and you could not be, you could not serve on other boards and committees as well as FinCom if you were an officer of the town, because as soon as you became a member of FinCom, you became an officer, so.
I'm not going to argue with you.
Cleaned up the language.
That's not the way I, I understood it either, Mr. Jermaine. I remember, we had a, we had a meeting with, with, uh, council and, and he explained to us that if you were on another board of committee, then you were considered an officer of the town. That's the way I remember it anyway, and that's.
Town council actually said that everyone listed
Everybody is an officer.
Report is an officer of the town. The, what the bylaw said was if you were on FinCom, you weren't allowed to serve on another board, committee, or commission.
Well, it actually doesn't say that at all.
Okay. Moving on.
This is the whole reason for the, the, this bylaw change, so in any case, but it doesn't, it doesn't say, it makes no reference to other boards, committees, commissions. That was the old, um, capital outlay bylaw. Um, the, the wording was very convoluted, and it's the reason why you had to have council come in and, and look into it. We have members of FinCom, obviously, you know, I sit on ConCon. Pat Mahas is an elected member of the IDA. Ron Clark sits on the, on the, um, um, cable review committee, as does Pat, um, so we needed to come up with a bylaw that would work. What we came up with, and what I think they did, they worked very hard with, is, this stems from, and my argument last year was the Finance Committee, as we sit in this room right now, have absolutely no authority. We can't overrule anything the select board does. We don't put on, unlike some towns, we don't put on town meeting. We do not create the budget. We look over the budget, and we make recommendations to the select board, who are the CEOs of the town. So we are nothing more than an advisory board. Now, that being said, there's no reason to lock members of FinCom, given the fact that we are always looking for members to serve on other boards, to lock members of FinCom onto just FinCom. There is no conflict of interest. There's, uh, uh, Josh is a full-time, is a firefighter, and Beth abstains from the fire department vote, even though she doesn't have to, because we don't vote on firefighter salaries. We vote the whole block, but she abstains, uh, and I've said this in the past. Um, Kate Banzel abstained when it was EMS. Um, you know, so there's no, there's no conflict, and we put wording in here now that says that, um, it is further understood that the Finance Committee is an advisory committee to the select board and does not have the authority to override any budget decision made by the select board, should said board disagree with the recommendations of the Finance Committee. And, and that's the way it truly is in real life, so therefore, we're an advisory committee. And I would be, and I would agree with you, Sarah, if it was FinCom, only FinCom, like, I believe it should be select board and only select board, because nobody can overrule you. You are the select board. If we were doing the budget and we were actually running town meeting, then you wouldn't be able to overrule the, the, the findings of the Finance Committee, because in essence, the Finance Committee does the budget, and some towns actually do operate that way. Um, we don't, so we set it up that any registered voter, and this is where the big changes are. Um, any registered voter shall be eligible for appointment to the Finance Committee, or council on aging has been erased, and this is where it comes in, Mark, this is what I was saying. Except that no elected or appointed town officer or regular full or part-time town employee, a person holding a position of financial responsibility. So that old wording, except, it says except, no elected or appointed town officer. So if you're an elected or appointed town officer, you can't serve on the Finance Committee, but the moment you get put on the Finance Committee, you become a town officer. So that was the, that was the catch twenty-two in the wording. So we took it out, so now it will read, any registered voter of the town shall be eligible for appointment to the Finance Committee, except that no elected member of the select board or regular full or part-time employee in or person holding a position of financial responsibility, and there's an asterisk, for the town shall be eligible for membership on the Finance Committee. I don't know why they put it in such agency. No member of the town committee or board shall be authorized to vote as a member of the Finance Committee on any matter pertaining to the duties, to the, I'm sorry, to the budget or funding of a committee or board which he, she is a member of. The, the select board exclusion shall not apply to membership on capital outlay as described in Capital Outlay Committee Bylaw four, seven, one. And then the definition of a financial responsibility is a person of financial responsibility shall be defined as an individual hired to perform or consult on legal, accounting, or assessing duties for the town, and who is paid for this service as a contractor. So this was the way we cleaned it up. Um, and, and, and the only thing that, the more I look at this, um, the more I'm not crazy about, the custodians of such records shall cooperate with such requests. We've never, and, and Elaine actually asked me that question. We've never had a situation where any department that I've ever gone into and asked for something, they told me to go away. We've never, ever had that problem, so there was no need, I, I don't know why we, we put that in there, so I would be willing to just delete that bold line and take, just take it out.
Take a vote.
Yeah, take that. Custodians of such records shall cooperate with requests, because it already says that we will have the authority at any time to investigate the town's accounts and management in any department. The books, records, and accounts of all departments of the town shall be open to the inspection of the Finance Committee, or any of its authorized subcommittees, or any person authorized to act for said committee, so there's no reader, no need to say the cust- Or any person authorized to act for said committees, so there's no reader, no need to say the custodians of such records shall comply.
Mr. Fantasy? Has council reviewed this?
Uh, he has a copy of it. I don't think he's reviewed it for word for word yet.
Okay, I think we need to, I would like to have his opinion.
Yeah.
Um. And I, I guess the, the very last? Sentence in there with, with the asterisk? Um, defining a person of financial responsibility? I wonder if, if towns, if that person of financial, financial responsibility can vary from town to town? Or if the state may have a definition of who in a town is a person of financial responsibility?
Where did this come from, the language?
This was just.
Was already there?
Yeah, this has just come out of the air, this is, I was trying to figure out? Um, before Ron and Pat took this, I was trying to figure out? How would you define that?
Because I recall from previous conversations when the question of who was an officer of a, of a town came up? We had that, and, and you may remember this, but I remember asking Mr. Corbo? Where did that definition can't come from, and I believe he stated that there was a, an accepted? A, a state? Verse, description of who an officer of, of a town is and who it isn't.
Yes, I'll tell you exactly what he said. An officer of a town? Is considered that anyone that sits on any board, committee or commission in any town? Where that board, committee or commission were established in law? Whether it was state law? Federal law? A town bylaw? Technically became an officer of the, of the town.
Well, that's, my only question is, I don't know if, if? If a personal financial, person of financial responsibility? Can be different from town to town? Or if the state hasn't? An accepted version of who a person of financial responsibility is? And I, I think we need to, to get that answer. Um. I also think quite frankly that? This has been going on for a while and I would like to give the full board? Uh, uh, the full select board an opportunity to, to vote on this. So, I, I think it's important to hear from you tonight, to hear why these changes were made.
We'd be happy to come back.
And it certainly? Whether it's all of you or you, we just invite, what would you say if it was Mr. Clark and Ms. Mahar?
Pat and, and Ron.
Maybe one of you might be available at our next meeting. Maybe one of you might be able to attend our next meeting just to discuss this? With the, with the full board, and I think in that time? We can get Mr. Corbo, or Mr. Corbo's opinion on? The different parts and, um? Have a more full discussion.
Yeah, can I ask a question to the?
Sure.
Finance, so on that one sentence, the custodians of such records shall cooperate with such requests? So did you already vote on this as a, as a committee? The whole? The whole, uh? Article?
Yes, we did.
So then you probably should make a motion and? Re, re, uh, redact that.
Right.
Or take it out, yeah.
All right, I'd like that motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to redact the line in 4.3.3. The custodians of such records shall cooperate with such request.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to redact? That, uh, that sentence in, uh, 4.3.3? Custodians of such records shall cooperate with such requests, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Thank you.
And, sorry, one quick question was, um? Does the fact that, I'm reading through this again, and when I got on the Finance Committee, it was? Always the? The idea that you wouldn't serve in any other committees, but I think? And I could have sworn it was in the bylaw, but I've read this a few times, I don't say it. Uh, but I think one of the arguments was the reserve fund of $125,000 that we do have control over as a finance committee. Um, and you can make decisions without the select board, so does that, when you talk to the attorney? Does that have any play?
Okay, so? By me?
Sure.
Cause I've done a lot of homework on this. Um. The $125,000 reserve? Fund for the Finance Committee, which this year is $175,000? Um, is, is actually, we're acting as a mini town meeting, town meeting? When they approve the shared costs? And they vote? They vote to put $175,000 into the reserve account? So they've sat, the town meeting has taken a vote and they've said, okay, we entrust? The Fin, the Finance Committee? With control over this $125,000 currently? And then the process that's in place now? Is no ma, I don't care if, if a, a department runs short for $12, they have to do a, a transfer request.
Hmm.
So that goes, the trans, they come to the town administrator and they say, hey, my budget is short. Uh, we did it for Cara Dayhill a couple of years ago, or last year. Uh, my budget is short, $2,500. She fills out a transfer request form, the town administrator with the finance director approves that request form or denies it.
Hmm.
Um, and then they send it off, usually I get a copy of it? And then I schedule it for the next meeting? So that we have it, it's on the agenda and it's advertised, but it's gone through the vetting process? And that was the purpose of the? Of the reserve account was to, it, it creates a? Uh, I guess Michael used to refer to as a mini town meeting, because we, the town meeting has entrusted FinCon with those funds? So that the process is, is completely transparent, we obviously can't go on a cruise with the thing, so? And it requires a lot of vetting to come behind it.
Yep, understood.
But you can feel free to check with Greg on that too. But I, I, that was always my understanding, this is, you know, my fifth year as chair, so? I've done a lot of? Research on this particular bylaw, because it's been a sore subject for three years.
Are there other questions from the members of the select board? On this bylaw? Okay. All right, the final item on our joint agenda here is the Planning Board placeholder, and do I understand that there was some?
Yes, I'm very, very pleased? Um. To say that? Planning Board met with us last night, as you know, um? The stipends? Came as a result for, other than really planning, and I think select board, stipends came as a result of a 204, 2014? Vote by the Governance Committee that was brought to town meeting in 2015 for inclusion in the 2016 warrant? And in, in, in the 2015 town meeting? For the FY16? That schedule, at that time Schedule C? Was voted in? To, to offer? Stipends to? Um, various boards and committees, one of them being FinCon, they never got a stipend before, which is why the bylaw never got changed. Um, but at that time? Planning Board stipend was cut almost in half. They were at one point getting $2,000 and $1,000. And it was cut in half? To 1,00800. Um. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was 1,0800. So? Couple of months ago, I had watched the Planning Board meeting and they were talking about putting a placeholder in the warrant? For an increase in their stipend? And I fired off an email? Um, I CC'd Bob Fantasy, I CC'd the chair? And explained the procedure? And never heard anything, and then they mentioned it again? And I fired off another email? And I still never heard anything? And? Uh, Tom Bott reached out? I think Friday? And said, we'll be coming, oh, maybe it was Thursday? And he said, when we meet on? Monday? Um, we're gonna bring the? Warrant article for stipend increases to the Planning Board, to the FinCon. So they came last night? And Connie Shea explained what he, what he thought, and he asked for a $200 increase? To their stipend? Which would bring him to 1,200? It'd bring the member to, to 1,000? And I didn't know this, um, the way the bylaw was written? The alternate member, because he was not elected? He's appointed, got nothing? So the alternate member usually goes on all these site visits also? So Connie had asked for a $200 annual stipend for the alternate member to get it started? Um, there was discussion? Uh, Ron made the motion, Pat seconded it? Uh, the vote was five to two? To offer the stipend, uh, and put it in, and I let? It be known and it's on TV, it's in the minutes? Um, I asked Connie if you would withdraw the article? He said he could not speak for the entire Planning Board? And then I said, well, I just want you to know? That it'll be our recommendation to the select board? Tomorrow night, meeting tonight? That that article not be included in the warrant? And we talked about setting the precedent of trying to get a, a, a stipend increase on the floor of town meeting. It's inappropriate? Um, it doesn't go through a vetting process? There is no oversight to it? And if we open that can of worms, I think that we're going down the wrong street. I think that it opens the door for, what's to stop the select board for deciding, you know, well, we should be getting paid $12,000. Let's bring that to the, you know, town meeting.
Circumvent the whole process.
It, it, it completely goes around the whole process, so now? And I'm kinda glad it happened this way, Connie's right, things have gone up? Um, but now we have no choice but to look at other stipends, because a couple of years ago? At the request of the former town administrator? We took up? The Select Board stipends? And we took up, actually, Michael asked me, just let's look at the whole stipend? Sheet? And let's see what should have some adjustments? And we moved? Um? ConCon? Up, and I abstained? Uh, but we moved ConCon up to the same level as planning, because like planning? ConCon has two meetings a month? They have two meetings a month? We go to site visits, they go to site visits, both post? Application and, and, and pre-application, so? We do as much, so I thought it was keeping in line with the two, so it raised ConCon from what was 300? Uh, for the chair up to 1,000, it brought them up to where planning was. And then we increased the select board, because people don't really understand how much you really do put in.
But as far as this placeholder, Mr. Fantasy, uh, do I understand, is it going? Is, is your belief that it's going to be withdrawn?
They were, they were voting tonight on it, so.
So we can, we can hold on this, there's really no reason for us to take a vote on this until we know.
We'll vote on it next time.
Are you sure it's not gone, because we got an email this morning from?
No, I remember he said that they had to vote.
Yeah.
Connie said they had to go back and vote on it. It was his recommendation? For the 200? So you voted on that?
Well, that, that should be a simple enough item to take, take care of at the next meeting, cause it may not even be a vote. It might be withdrawn and we don't even need to act on it. So thank you for the background.
It may be withdrawn, but? I thought we got an email this morning, say, from Tom Bott saying it was withdrawn.
Oh.
Oh.
Well, if it is, it is, and if it's not, we'll?
But in any case, if it is not withdrawn, it is FinCon's recommendation that it not be put on the warrant.
Right.
We voluntarily gave them their stipend increase and it's what they asked for.
Okay. Thank you for that, and thank you for all the information on the, uh, on the budget articles, and we, we look forward? To getting the capital outlay, uh, recommendations. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add? To what we've talked about here?
No, I just said.
Actually, there is.
No.
Excuse me.
I thought, I think he said Mr. Fantasy.
Yeah, I know, but I didn't want you to forget this. Um? And, and perhaps? Bob and Sue should talk about this, there's a whole bunch of money? Sitting in completed project?
That is a good point.
That never got swept. I e, $60,000 in the bucket truck? For O and M, that bucket truck is on the road, registered and going to work every day? And there's still $60,000 left over? To purchase that bucket truck.
And that, and that is part of the select board financial management policies, to sweep those accounts on an annual basis.
Well, this takes the vote.
Will be, yeah, so? That, that amount was 427,61284. That will now be? Transferred over to the capital plan.
Okay.
That's part of that. Ultimately, if, if the bonding goes through? There'll be an additional 1.725893.
Can you give me that number one more time?
So if the bonding?
Plus?
Plus that 427,612.
So over $2,000,000.
Or 2.153? 506.39, 2,153,506.39.
Thank you.
This was part of the whole package to?
Yeah.
Keep the capital plan on track? And, and then, and, and hats off to Sue? Because she went digging through all of this and found this is money left over? From projects that should have been zero, we need to sweep these accounts.
She, um, she contacted, the first thing she did is contacted all departments that were affected. For instance, there were a number like in the fire department? Um, that? You know, if I look at it, I'd say, okay, we'll sweep that, but no, they're still being used and they're still? Even though it might have been, might have been, um, held for a year, two years with nothing happening?